Good evening. Welcome to a special study session of the Millbrae City Council. I don't believe we need a formal roll call. Everyone's present, so welcome.
Yes, thank you Mayor, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, interim City Manager. I would like to introduce you to Marco Limandri, who is the President of New City America, here tonight to take you through the BID process. Marco has owned this company for 20 years, and I was going to say he set up some of the most successful, but he has set up the most successful, not just some, but the most successful. BID is not only in California, but across the United States. So I think he has more knowledge of this process than just about anybody in the United States. So without any further delay on my part, I'd like to introduce Marco to the City Council and to the community to bring you through this initial presentation of the BID process.
You go over there. I think we needed like a drumroll for all that introduction.
Pretty good, huh?
My goodness, it's exciting.
Tom gave me far too much credit for stuff. Mostly in California, not nationwide. New York City's got some of the best districts in the country, so I didn't do any of those.
We're welcome.
Thank you. There's many great districts, and it's really not a question of setting them up, it's a question of managing them, because it's like a city. Establishing a city is one thing, managing it is something else. But I have done about 25 in the Bay Area. And to go forward on this PowerPoint...
We're gonna need to make sure you're very close to the microphone there, so everybody can hear you.
Mayor, if I may, excuse me, this is televised this evening, just so everybody's aware.
So Elaine's gonna show me the right tools here.
You could do this, you could do the mouse, or you can...
Okay, I'll use this. Okay, so I'm gonna just give you an overview. Most of, as Tom mentioned, I have done 82 districts. It's a family-owned company, I'm the president of it, so I'm the one that will interact with all the business and property owners and residents and anybody. I don't have any staff that does it, I do that. And just today, I was in San Leandro, Millbrae, here, of course, Redwood City, and Santa Rosa. So this is just sort of what I do on a regular basis.
So just to be clear, we're much more important than Redwood City.
That I know, I was about to say that. You took the words out of him. But one of the first things I show people is, most downtowns don't know what they are, and so this, I thought that this slide always would depict it. I did this when I was doing it, I saw this when I was doing a district in Sacramento. It says pancakes, circas, steaks, seafood, salads, and then it says breakfast anytime. It's like, why would you go there? What is it? And that's what many of our downtowns are today. They don't know what they are, and they don't know where they're going. And this is one of the best ones. It's, we found this in New England, I'm doing a lot of work there. It says fish and optician, and it's a lobster with glasses on. You said, "Why would I go into this place?" But this was actually a legitimate business. And when many of us were growing up, we used to talk about apple was a fruit, and now it is this transformative communication device. So words mean something too, just like when you say downtown Millbrae, what comes to someone's mind? If I say apple, 30 years ago it meant one thing, today it means something else. And Amazon used to be a jungle and a river, and now it's completely turning retail on its head. So the district that I'm most familiar with is Little Italy District in San Diego, in downtown San Diego, which we formed and have been managing for the last 20 years. Little Italy started as the tuna capital of the world. We have what's called a community benefit district, that's what I call them these days instead of business improvement districts, because so many of the districts are being reinvented by housing. And residents don't consider themselves to be part of a business improvement district, but really a community benefit district. I have a lot of before and afters. This was the heart of Little Italy, it's called Our Lady of the Rosemary Church, it's what it looked like about 10 years ago, and it's been transformed by the undergrounding of telephone poles, as well as the landscaping. Old industrial buildings on some of our main streets went from this to this. It was a great condo development called DOMA. Looking north, pretty desolate, this is the southern end of Little Italy in 2000, and that was transformed with some of the same buildings into this, which was one of the most successful mixed-use developments in Little Italy when we had a redevelopment agency. Looking south, you can see how closely Little Italy is to downtown San Diego. A lot of high-rises, you look on both sides of the street, a lot of first-generation buildings, and it was evolved into this, which was mixed-use and some affordable housing. This was about one block from the core of our district. 2002, been transformed into this mixed-use development. This was one building, but we worked the developer to have various roof lines and different colors in order to mix it up. The old parole office used to be one block from the core of Little Italy, and it was transformed into a new residential development. All these residential developments under the redevelopment agency were based upon what's called floor-area ratio, and they had a requirement for commercial on the ground floor, so it would really support pedestrian activity on the ground floor. The, looking northward again, in Little Italy, this was transformed by the Olsen Company, and they actually, this is our first piazza that we built of public space. Olsen Company gave up this corner spot in order to facilitate public seating. You guys have this excellent microclimate, we are very fortunate to have microclimates all throughout the state of California. We're about 300 yards from the water, so it's always nice and breezy. And not using the outdoors as a place to interact, conduct business, eat, watch your kids play, is really a loss. So it's really important to incorporate that, and Olsen Company did that. And the most important thing, this was something that we did, they gave us basically the platform, and we put up the tables, chairs, and umbrellas, and our crew locks them up every day. But I always tell people that the most important thing in the test of a healthy community is young women, and particularly children. If you see one, young woman participating and using a business district, they believe it's safe. If you see a bunch of teenage guys running around on skateboards at 3:00 in the afternoon, it sends a different message. So that's really an organic way of testing the support of the community. This was the heart of our district, and it was just a lot of older Italian businesses. You'll see this building on the corner. Closest to you was the old DeFalco's Grocery Store, converted to a newspaper area. You'll see, this is 9:00 in the morning in 1999, one guy walking across the street, no cars parked. This was transformed in the course of about 10 years to this. We have a Little Italy sign, we popped out the street, put in diagonal parking like you have on Broadway, planted some very fast-growing fall-colored cherries, and it totally transformed the district. So I want to reiterate that this happened within 10 years, and it had to do with redevelopment support, new sidewalks, street trees, streetlights, but also a very aggressive management company and management district with an active board of directors. It's a 501(c)(3), 28 board members on it, and we just said, "Let's go, let's go, let's go." And we also have, you can see some of the dogs, which I'll show you a little bit later. When we got 3,000 new residential units over the last 12 years, we got about 1,500 dogs. This is just a shot taken on a Friday afternoon two weeks ago, as to what has happened when we just expanded the sidewalks, and the people who show up and just love eating in Little Italy. You can see how close the plane is. We're as close to Lindbergh Field as you guys are to SFO. So this plane is not a wayward plane, Little Italy's actually in the flight path. So the, this is what the street looked like. You'll see the popouts there, very little landscaping. We transformed that in about five or six years to this. A much more intimate place, a far more walkable place, heavily landscaped. People love walking in well-landscaped areas, and our Little Italy sign is considered a town center sign in the middle of the community. We have our own sidewalk steam cleaning crew, we do beautification, have our own eight ornamental employees, about 20 maintenance workers, do our own pressure washing and our own landscaping. It's all done in-house, they're all members, or they're all employees of the 501(c)(3). We also run our own valet program. You guys don't have parking meters here, that I've seen, but in San Diego they have parking meters, and I would debate with anybody that say that the easiest places to park are usually the places you don't want to go, because there's a reason why it's easy to park. You eventually will have the need for turnover of parking spaces, and eventually parking meters should be under consideration by the business community, as well as the property owners and the City Council. San Diego has an ordinance that says that 45% of the parking meter revenues must stay in the district from which they're generated. In our case, it's $600,000 a year. It's not insignificant. And what we did to stop multiple valet programs, we said, "The association is a nonprofit corporation, it's gonna run its own valet program." We pay people to use the office building parking lots at night, we have plenty of liability, all our employees are paid living wage, and we have about 20 to 25 valet employees on a nightly basis. You can see that we do a lot with landscaping, we brand everything in Little Italy, and this was just a wheelbarrow we got at Home Depot, and in the spring we would do these types of decorations. For a while we did events. We just passed Columbus Day yesterday, we started Columbus Day Festival in 1994. We stopped it about four years ago, because the point of the Columbus Day was to bring attention to Little Italy. We don't have to do that anymore, there's enough people there all the time. 20,000 people per weekend attend our farmer's market, that's over a million a year, so the businesses just got event fatigue, and we stopped doing this stuff, because it wasn't serving everybody's purposes, and the residents then were blocked out of their homes, too. So it was a great, very successful event, but we just evolved out of it. You can see how crowded these streets would become. We would also do, we have bocce ball up in what's called Dimitri Park, we would do dancing, chalk drawing, and all these different things as part of the festa. This was one of the first public spaces we did after the Olsen Company. This was a, just a regular street grid on this corner. We wanted to do a piazza dedication to the boys that never came home from World War II. Little Italy was an immigrant community, it always has been. It was included Italians, Portuguese, Mexican, Chinese, Japanese, they were all part of the fishing industry. And so we found out that the nationality of the boys that never came home were Italian, Portuguese, and Mexican. And we built this piazza in cooperation with the city of San Diego, and the association manages it, and now it has become a center for the Marine Corps, who use it as their own. It's called Piazza Barcelona. This is one of the flags, you'll see the Portuguese, Italian, and Mexican flag, along with the US flag every day in that piazza. And when they, we have a very large marine base up in San Diego called Camp Pendleton. When Camp Pendleton, every year, sometimes every two years, they have games in which the soldiers from, come throughout the world, they could be amputees, they might have lost an eye, or have some type of disability. Every Monday, at the beginning of the week of those games, they come to Little Italy, they go to the Piazza Barcelona, and then we'll take 130, 140 people, and we'll feed them for free at 10, 12 different restaurants. They just go, they can eat, drink, get back on the bus, and they go back. And this is just a way that we give back. It's not just about selling spaghetti, or you know, sausage sandwiches, it's about giving back to the people that built the community. This is another view of that same group. And then we decided a few years ago that we have poinsettias, you use cyclamills up here, but poinsettias are grown in San Diego, and this is what our tree is. Our maintenance guys came up with this concept. They built it, they put it together every year, there's $6,000 in poinsettia trees, or, sorry, tretta bushes, and that's what it looks like in the daytime, this is what it looks like at night. We do this annually as just an annual event, and I think it's Bravo TV says this was the fourth-best community tree in the country about three years ago. And this is what it looks like when it's all lit up. Now, this was a corner of Main and Main, in a certain sense it could be like your Hillcrest and Broadway, which is kind of like the core of your district right now. But this is what it looked like. I'll bring to your attention those news racks that are there on the right side. I would tell you that if you don't have an ordinance that protects the news racks, you should get rid of them, because nobody sells newspaper in news racks anymore. It's mostly free newspapers. And it's not an issue of freedom of speech anymore, because anybody can get any newspaper worldwide online. So you work with the newspaper companies, and they all abandoned them. So they became centers for people dropping off drugs and doing all sorts of other things, or they were graffiti, or the windows were crashed. So there should be some, but they used to be all over the place in Little Italy. This was a street that we worked on, a developer decided to buy both sides of the street, and I'll show you in the next few slides what happened. This was 10,000 square feet, the street was 50 by 100. This is what it looked like in the interim, and this is what the new piazza looks like. It just opened three months ago, took about four years to build. There's parking underneath this piazza, and there's housing on both sides. We actually included with the support of the developer, some affordable units within this development, because there's, the only elementary school in downtown San Diego is in our, in our community. And we wanted to make sure that people that lived in, or worked in Little Italy could have kids in Little Italy, too. The piazza has grown pretty dramatically. This is only the last three or four months. It's a great event for doing events. The association, as a nonprofit, runs this piazza. We manage it, we clean it, we do everything in cooperation with the developer. And we have a great lighting system. This was all paid for through developer impact fees, as well as the developer, because we don't have redevelopment money anymore. So we have to be really creative on how we're going to fund a lot of these things. This is some of the things that we looked at in Little Italy. The main street here is on the left side, which is called India Street. You can see where the Piazza Familia is. The next block up is where Our Lady of the Rosemary Church is, it's the heart of the community, it's been there for almost 100 years. But then we had a problem with all the new residents and all their dogs. We had, we figured 1,500 dogs that moved to Little Italy. Dogs do things in the public right-of-way that most people don't do. So we started spending about $10,000 a year just on dog bags. And we said, "These dogs need a place to go after their, their owners get home from work." So we took this, we entered into a 66-year lease with the school district. They had a problem, because the dogs would do their things at night, and the kids would step in it and bring it into the classroom. So we made an agreement, and we split the dog park. And we split, we split the playing field, and it became this dog park. And the dog park, we raised $150,000 from dog owners for this park. Put in turf, and the dogs are up there every single day. And we have to clean it, of course, but it's relieved all this complaining to us that people have nowhere to put their dogs. It's actually the only dog park in downtown San Diego now. And then we have something called the Mercato. The association generates about $1 million in assessments per year. Our annual budget's about $3.5 million, between parking meter revenues that we get, and this mercato, which is a farmer's market. As I said, it brings about 20,000 people per weekend to Little Italy. Gross is about 800,000, nets to the association around 350,000 to 400,000. That's non-assessment district money that we can use for projects. So it was, it worked out really well. We have a great microclimate again, and people see the ocean. Then we started doing things like, how do we slow people up in the public rights of way? So people used to always stand in the street underneath this Little Italy sign, and we knew someone was gonna hit by a car, so my wife and I saw this on the East Coast, this giant Adirondack chair, and our maintenance guys built it. The minute we put it up, people started using it. And it says, "You can go online and post your picture," but this, we paint it every three months, and it's, all the red is completely worn down on the seat, but everybody uses. It's just another amenity. It's not to sell anything, it's just to say, "Take a picture as a prop on the street." And this is an example of a 14-year-old birthday party that they did in Little Italy, and they all sat on this chair, and thank God it didn't collapse. We have this other picture, we manage a place called Downtown Glendale. We did the same thing, worked with the city on vacating a street, putting up tables, chairs, and umbrellas. Flexible seating instead of permanent seating, because permanent seating you can't control. Flexible seating you can control. You can open it up, and you can always move it around. If it's hot, you move the chair in the sun, or in the shade. If it's cold, you can move it into the sun. It's, it's a very good thing to do. We've also done things with displays throughout the seasons. This is something that we did in the spring. And then in San Leandro, we did it for a few years, we'll bring it back next year. In Little Italy and in Glendale, people just get off on this stuff. I mean, we started putting out these scarecrows, and people would set their kids down on those hay bales and take pictures of them. So now, as of today, in Little Italy, we're putting out them on every single corner. So when people are driving up, but San Diego is not known for its fall color, so we have to make things up, because somehow the city fathers believed that palm trees were native to San Diego, so they planted them all over the place. We've done the exact opposite. And we also do things with toy soldiers. So we put toy soldiers up during the holidays, people sponsor them, and it gives you this feeling that you're, you're enjoying the seasons. This is our, in San Leandro, this was just called Joaquin Plaza. We worked with the Exploratorium, and they built this great program in which you sit there, and you rock back in chairs, and you hear all these different tonal sounds. And it's been really a great attraction with the kids, and the Exploratorium paid for this entire display themselves. Some more scarecrows in San Leandro. We did the first tree lighting in San Leandro about four years ago, and now it's become a really major event. Truth is Beauty was built, but the OSI and Westlake Urban Headquarters, right next to the BART station, and they paid for, this was from Burning Man, and they hired the artist to build this statue, and it's just a phenomenal statue. It's directly, and it was just public art, and they did this next to the BART station, it's part of our district. Then we knew that kids were, you know, they liked chocolate, and they wanted to do something around Easter, so we sponsored with Giordelli, which is based in San Leandro, this Easter egg, giving out candy. Ironically, we're doing this in Little Italy now on trick-or-treating, and I finally got a dentist to underwrite it, because I said that the people that were making the money on all this candy was, were dentists, so they should pay for it. And now here's you guys. I mean, you have great bones in this city. You have El Camino, which is really a traditional boulevard, but then you have Broadway, which is a much more intimate area and an intimate street. You've got this state-of-the-art Safeway, which is really well-done, and I think Safeway learned a lot from Whole Foods and some of the other stores that they had to up their game. It's not like you can go in and build another grocery store, there's not a lot of margin in grocery stores, but they really did a good job on this store, and it's a permanent asset to this community. And you've got great walkability that exists on Broadway, and I had to take a picture of this. This is by the post office, because I just wanted to show that, you know, 80% of these things are empty, and so sooner or later, these things should be considered as dormant. You did a lot, it looks like, with the redevelopment agency in terms of making safe pedestrian passages across the intersections. You have some great historical and really unique buildings. This one just always blew me away. I didn't really know where this was from, but I'm sure there's a great story about it, too. It fits, it's, because you have this really eclectic Broadway, pardon me?
It's a fade.
Yeah, I figured that much.
That's why we lost.
But it, I think it fits, and I think it works. Then you've got empty buildings, too, and you know, the question is supply and demand. So if you create a good identity, then you're gonna create demand, and if you just let the market do it itself, it's not gonna happen. You really need to help drive the market and spur the market on. You've got some great architecture, again, and this mixed-use development, great walkability. This is this grocery store, this produce store is really a great place. And I just love the walking around, this great, the meat company, which is on the corner there, some more news racks, but these ones actually have cages around them, so I guess they can't escape. Some more news racks. But the walkability as you go south on Broadway is really cool. Then you get to El Camino, you've got a lot of places for people to stay. Eventually, when they, whether they're going to the airport, or they're doing, there's a festival here in Millbrae, they can stay in the hotels, and they just walk into it, which makes complete sense. And I'm not sure how many rooms you have, but this is really a great place, and far more inexpensive than San Francisco was, which is kind of out of control. But I took all these different pictures, and I said, "This is really impressive. You got this great little pop-out here that I think works. It shows that people are really into sitting outside." You have this really interesting intersection here at Hillcrest and Broadway, where you're enhancing the lights and showing some type of focal point. Everybody likes centers, they like to know they're in the middle of something. That's why we put up the Little Italy sign. And it seems that if you're really gonna embellish a town center, it would be this intersection, which I think these are clearly the beginnings of that. Your banner program, again, the hotels. And then you have these first-generation buildings that probably aren't gonna be here for another three to five years, but the development potential around the BART station is unbelievable. As you build that density, and as people, and you're not gonna be having, I think, a lot of Class A office buildings, but you're gonna have a lot more mixed-use and high-density residential. The BART station is gonna be the only way you get around. You guys have 101 and 280. You try driving on the 880 in the morning in East Bay, it's a, it's a complete cluster, you cannot get around. I left San Leandro this morning at 7:00, took me two hours to get to Santa Rosa, and it's just trying to get across the Richmond Bridge. And that's our future. They're not gonna widen the freeways, and BART, and Smart Train, and Caltrain are gonna be the only way to really get around. And you already have at the beginning of some high-density residential development with built-in amenities, which I think are pretty cool, too, as you're walking around. And this is your entry and exit from the BART station, right now. I mean, there, I think eventually you have something that's much better than this, but when I first got to Millbrae, and I got off, and I said, "This is clearly an area of improvement," because I didn't even know when I was gonna hit the downtown area. And you've got great opportunities right outside the BART station for redevelopment. Parking lots were important at one point when we were completely vehicular-driven, but that's not so much the case anymore. We will be vehicular-driven, but with smart cars, and with Uber, and Lyft, and then eventually self-driving cars, it's really gonna become a different place. And the center of all that activity is here on the peninsula. So a lot of these cities are really gonna be the first ones to experience those things. So I wanted to give you some examples of special benefit, special benefits funded by property assessments. You cannot create an assessment district to replace city services. Those are called general benefits, they're paid out of the general fund. And if you, if the city lowers the services in one place, they have to do it citywide. They can't say, "Oh, you established a district, we're gonna lower the frequency of services." So they can, they can fund sidewalk sweeping, steam cleaning, enhanced trash, or bulk item removal, graffiti abatement. As long as the city's not doing these, these are all acceptable. Special benefits, fund parking management services, community valet, enhance special lighting over and above what you currently have, create demand for current properties, businesses and development, I have this as an old slide from Uptown, and finding beautification and decorations, tree maintenance, planting and watering. Other things are funding district identity, marketing promotion. In Little Italy, we have, I'm not a real big Facebook or Instagram follower, or any of that, but from what I'm told, we have 65,000 Facebook followers. And whenever, in the old days, when you did an event, you had to put up posters, or hand out flyers. You don't have to do that anymore. You don't have to do that anymore. When you do an event, it's just all social media. And we have a great PR firm that works with us on that. Wayfinding signage, which is really key, coming from the BART station. Funding public space development, management, and maintenance, capital improvements, funding parking lot structures and parking meters. You can do that if you have a longer-term district, not with a short-term. New street trees, curb, gutter, sidewalk improvements. The generation of revenue and the use of funds, assessments are not taxes and can't be ad valorem due to Prop 13. You can't take assessment district revenues and stick them in the general fund. They must be used within a designated area based upon a management district plan as well as an engineer's report. The benefit formula, because we have Prop 13, everywhere else I work throughout the country, it's a fraction of your property taxes that goes into the assessment district. You can't do that in California, because if Tom bought commercial property in 1973 and I bought it last year, we have totally different assessed valuations. So you have to look at, what does each property have in common? Lot size, linear frontage, building square footage, land use, and then maybe benefit zones. If it's in the core, it's benefit zone one. If it's in the periphery, it might be benefit zone two with a reduced assessment. So you can create different benefit zones, too. There's got to be proportional benefit. You can't just say, oh, well, you're the richest, so you're going to pay the most. You need to show what the relationship is in what somebody pays and what they receive, and that needs to be articulated and backed by an engineer's report. And the process for formation is based upon a weighted vote of the property owners. It's not one property owner, one vote, it's $1, one vote. Now, you as a city council would not be banking that determination. The city manager doesn't make that determination. I don't make that. That's in the state constitution. It's in Prop 218. And Proposition 218 says, the establishment of a property assessment district is based upon a mail ballot procedure, and it's supported if the weighted return ballots support the establishment of the district. So in that scenario, the shopping center across the street is very relevant, the Safeway Center is extremely relevant, the hotels are very relevant, because they're such large parcels with large building mass. So, for example, you might have all the smaller property owners that want to do it, but if the large ones don't, you either have to cut the large ones out or figure out what you're going to do. So that's the challenge that you have. Key issues on any place, what's the place? Do you have financial stability of the place? And do you have a district management corporation for the place? So the place is downtown Milbury. Do you have financial stability of that place outside of what the city does? No. You have no merchants association that is generating money, there's no Main Street group, and there's no property owner association. That's it. Whatever you see on El Camino and Broadway is what the city is doing. So there's no independent financial base, which is really important. And then there's no corporation using those revenues in order to enhance the place. This is an example of the Little Italy Association for fiscal year '17. You'll see there's multiple revenue sources. You'll see the community benefit district is around $900,000. That's our assessment district. Parking revenues, you know, $940,000. The farmer's market, about $450,000, that's the net, and then all the other sources. Because you shouldn't only rely on assessments. You should try to get as much foundation support, grants. You're clearly a TOD, so can you get cap-and-trade money for that? Are there transit-oriented development grants for that purpose in order to do capital improvements that tie the transit center into the downtown? And this is how we expend money, on the community benefit district, parking district, et cetera. So, you know, we might have $3.3 million per year, but at the end of the year, there's no money left, because we're doing multiple things simultaneously. And I just wanted to take a few final pictures. This is sales tax growth. You can see the way it was in 2002 and the dip in 2008, but it's essentially doubled in just Little Italy over the last 15 years. And you know as well as I do that property taxes are not really where are going to be funding cities in the future. It's hotel taxes, it's utility fees, as well, it's sales taxes. Because property taxes are pretty much set, particularly if people are not turning their property around. So we have to look for other ways in which to generate revenue as a city. This was our residential growth, and this was as of 2015. Since this point, there's been 1,000 new units that have been added, because things are now moving really, really quickly. So you can see it's been a pretty phenomenal growth in Little Italy. And this is, I think, the last, people talk a lot about retail. Well, you need to look at this graph, because if you look in the United States right now, we have 24 square feet per capita. That blows away anybody else in the, really, in the world. Canada, which has 24 million people in the entire country, California has more than Canada does, is even at 15 to 1, because they have so few people. But Australia's 10 to 1, and the UK is 5 to 1. So when you look at this, you say, we have a lot of commercial buildings that are obsolete, and they're never going to become commercial again. They're never going to become retail again. But what they are valuable is this land. And can they become mixed-use? Yes. And as mixed-use, those residents are going to have demands, and you'd be surprised, their demands are going to be for grocery stores, for dog-related activities, you know, dog washes, as well as doggy food stores, bars, restaurants, and not to become an entertainment center, but a lot more amenities that people can walk to, particularly the demographic that's 55 and older. They're going to be wanting to move into a walkable community. And the walkable neighborhoods are the ones that are most popular nationwide, and that's not going to change. And I left you on the end, just the whole process. Once we initiate this process, we would be, shows you what you can do with your special benefits in terms of the services on number two. The process for investigation and formation, we'll be looking at creating a downtown Milbury PB, Property Business Improvement District Steering Committee. We'll do a survey of the property owners in October and November, determine where is our weighted support, and set the boundaries in December, January. Determine the plan, the benefit zones cost in January. This is all done with the property owners. I don't do this just with city staff. I need to have a group of property owners that come together and do this. Finalize a plan, circulate a petition. You need 50% of the property owners in order to sign a petition in March and April. The balloting then would probably be happening in May or June. And if you want to generate revenues by December 2019, you have to complete the public hearing by the end of July, because it needs to be on the property tax rolls. So you're going to have to tell the county tax assessor by the end of July to put these on the rolls. But property owners have four different ways in which to interact. One, they can react on the survey and say, this is a stupid idea, I pay plenty of property taxes, this is the city's job. Then I said, great, you got what you got, and you're not going to get anything more. That's what it is. Secondly, they can say, yeah, I'm open to this, and they have the steering committee to participate in. Third, they approve a plan, which lays out the costs and the services that they would be receiving. Fourth, they have to sign a petition, and 50% of them by weight have to sign that petition, and all that does is trigger the balloting. And then the balloting would occur, and every single property owner, whether they supported it or opposed it, would get a mail ballot. They have 45 days to return the mail ballot. It's brought back to the city council, the city clerks counts the ballots, and if the weighted return ballots support the district, the city council is going to adopt a resolution then to create the district. So that's the 30,000-foot level of everything that is anticipated to occur, ideally over the next nine months. And I'm happy to answer any questions the city council has.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you for that remarkable presentation. It's very exciting, and I hope that we can transform our downtown. This has been a long process, and you seem to be very well-versed and very skilled at this, so we're happy that you came aboard. And you've pretty much nailed it on the head in a lot of these issues that we need to address. Some of the questions that I haven't been hearing on your presentation is, what is the mixture of office space and residential and commercial? And how many families are there? I mean, you know, in a rough estimate, how many families are living in that area? Or is it morally just single people? Is it couples? Do you have any type of breakdowns on that?
You know, it's anecdotal, but I would tell you that since we have the only elementary school, and when we have two- and three-bedroom apartments or condos, that's where we're going to have the families. There are quite a few millennials that live there, but it's interesting that there's a lot of older people that have moved in there. They bought condos in 2005, 2006, 2007, and they just love the fact that they walk downstairs and they can get whatever they want there. So it's really an eclectic mix, and a lot of the old-timers that were there, Italians from generations, generations ago, born and raised there, and they're in their 80s, are still there. So they didn't move out either. They were never eminent domain by redevelopment, so they just kept their places, and they felt comfortable living there. So you go in the heart of Little Italy, and you'll still see people who have been there for, you know, four generations. So it's quite a mix. Washington Elementary School's population was around 300. 10 years ago, it's closer to 380 now. It's becoming a much better magnet school, and people are wanting to live there so their kids can go to school there.
Can I put the office space?
You know, office space, it's interesting that, you know, maybe in Boston, somewhat south of Market in San Francisco, to a certain extent LA and DC, you see office space going up, but it's not really going up. All the high-rises in New York are predominantly residential at this point, market-rate residential. We actually, Kilroy, which is doing a ton of development here in the peninsula in San Francisco, is building Class A office in Little Italy right now, smack in the middle of the community. And we haven't had Class A office built in probably 15 years. But they know that this is the community that those type of millennials or others will want to be living in. Redwood City's been a great example of attracting a lot of Class A office right next to the Caltrain station, and having a lot of residential component, too. So if you have the right mix, particularly if you're by a BART station or Caltrain, you will attract that office, because it's so easy to get around that way.
I'm sorry, Ms. Schneider.
We have Milbury Square, which you commented on, and they keep their property really in great shape. They've already put in the street-side dining areas or entertaining areas. How do you take a sort of an advanced company and merge them into a district with the rest of the street? Because they're currently paying for it, and now you're going to be, I think, and I support this, but if they become part of the BID, they're losing some of their ability to dictate where those dollars are going.
Well, that's an excellent question, and what I would say is, you would look at them, and I need to meet with the property owner, and Tom and I were just discussing that with Wayne, and just saying, I want to talk to the property owner, because one thing that their tenants want are more customers. So they're doing what they're doing right now to drive traffic to that area, but I'm sure that, you know, the Trader Joe's, the Walgreens, the other restaurants would like a lot more customers. Well, that's going to be realized by a very aggressive marketing campaign, where people say, where are we going to eat tonight? And they say downtown Milbury, or by new residential that's built in the downtown area. So their benefit won't be sweeping the sidewalks or creating public spaces, their benefit will be marketing promotion. So the proposal then would be, we're going to create a special benefit zone, where other people might be paying for the full list of services, but you're paying for marketing promotion, because you don't need the other services, nor will you get the other services because you're already taking care of them. So you can create benefit zones, and the benefit zones articulate what special benefits they'll pay for and which ones they'll receive.
We also have a cultural arts committee that we're trying to grow and give them some ability to help grow more public art. How, if in San Diego or in the other cities, how do you merge a public committee or commission with a business group in terms of bringing in art? How does that work?
Well, we have extensive public art, and we feel that our public spaces are also public art, so we embed statues and fountains and things like that. We have four piazzas right now. So, but we also have public art on the sides of buildings, and we're the ones that have relationship with the property owners. So my son Joey, actually, that works for us, he's pretty close to getting a $50,000 grant from a major developer that said, look, we don't want to do public art in our building, we want you guys to implement it all throughout Little Italy. So we've started a number of different initiatives, where you'll see a granite plaque that has the family that built that business, and it tells the story of that family coming to San Diego from Sicily or Italy or wherever they did. That's public art, too. And doing things on, in Santa Rosa, if you ever heard of Peanuts and Charles Schulz, there are, you know, emblems of the Peanuts cartoons all throughout Railroad Square, as well as downtown Santa Rosa. So you find out, what was the history of this place? How do you try to accentuate the history through public art, and then have these streets really be like a learning table? So it's trying to merge those things. So when people leave downtown Milbury, they don't say, oh, I didn't know that was the center of X, Y, and Z. So I think that they're complementary, and I think that there are opportunities where you can do some great public art.
And one last question. We own land in that area, so how do you incorporate the public component? So I see that you're making a lot of money on parking. We, in theory, the city of Milbury, could be making money on parking. How do you balance that? Who gets that?
Well, you don't have parking meters, so you don't have a parking meter ordinance, but you can say, if you decided to create parking meters and you created an ordinance, you'd say, the purpose of the parking meters is X, Y, and Z. Number one, obviously, to turn over parking, because you don't want people parking there all day. Number two, to generate revenue for mobility-related services. And number three, that if you have this district in place, that you will then say, X amount, percentage will stay in the district to fund those mobility purposes. The other part will be for parking enforcement, because you're going to have to pay for parking enforcement somehow. And the mechanism for doing that is through parking meters.
And I assume that still works if on city property it becomes a mixed-use development?
Yes, it would. And one thing I neglected to say is that nobody's exempt in this district. So if City Hall was included in the district, the city would pay just like any other property owner. It doesn't matter if you're, I'm doing the financial district right now in Jackson Square, Church of Scientology is there, they're going to pay like anybody else. Catholic Church Diocese in Oakland pays around $40,000 a year. They're in the Lake Merritt Uptown District. So Prop 218 is very specific. It says, if you derive benefit, you pay. So you can pay different rates, but you still pay.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Oliva.
I was kind of curious on how the city staffing grows with all of this. What comes first? Do you hire people for planning and maintenance and such? Or how did it happen, like in Little Italy with staffing? Did they grow the city employees much larger, quicker?
No, because it's an independent corporation that has a contract with the city in order to administer the district as per the engineer's report. So we have a contact usually with the Economic Development Department, and then what we have to do is do regular reporting on how we spent the money. We have to do annual financial reviews, submit an annual report to the city. But otherwise, one of the beauties of these districts is that the city has a partnership, and we're not increasing city employees, because every city needs to look at what's going on with Calpers and everything else right now. But what this becomes is an economic development engine to attract new development, to increase sales, to attract new hotels, et cetera, which the city coffers and generates the benefit from.
Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, did you have another?
I had a couple of questions. So, thank you for the presentation. Everything looks great from what you've shown us. But one question I have is, Little Italy is a neighborhood in a large city close to a downtown in San Diego, whereas we're a small, more suburban city, small town. So how does the model differ between, you know, a neighborhood within a larger city versus, you know, a small city with one commercial corridor?
So in doing this, where all the places I've done it, I had showed you that one slide that I said, the key points are, what is the place? Does the place have independent financial stability? And number three, how is it managed? Is there a district management corporation? I don't care if you're in LA or San Francisco or in downtown Milbury, it's all about the place. And they all have their own identity. San Francisco, you know, it's not, they don't really have a downtown, it's called the Financial District, or Union Square, or Soma, or whatever else they decide to name it, Fisherman's Wharf, Russian Hill. So the place is really critical, and I think that's applicable to small cities as well as large cities. So the place is what is the key thing, and you do have a place, and you have all these assets, architecturally, walkability. And I would tell you, you know, you might go look, walk on Broadway for four or five blocks, and it's nice and flat. You go to California Street in Montgomery, and you try to walk up the hill, you're going to die in three blocks, because it's just completely vertical. So you have all these assets that are really good, and it's just a question of building up the place, because once people know it, they're going to come here if it's easy, and it's reasonable, and it's orderly, and there's something new all the time. So the place is the most important thing regardless of the size of the city.
Okay. And then another question. We are currently undergoing a general plan update right now.
Yes.
And also our PDA-specific plan, the El Camino and downtown area. So is there maybe some type of, you know, collaborative effort between getting the BID set up and updating our updating our general plan to make sure that we are, you know, we have like a unified vision for the future of the downtown?
Yeah, absolutely. When you're going to be looking at like the width of sidewalks, which is critical. For example, if you have 10-foot sidewalks and then someone wants to put outdoor seating, which is six feet, you have four feet left. And if you have a tree or a streetlight there, that's even less. So you want to try to make the standard as wide as possible, maybe 12, 13 feet of sidewalks. You want to make sure that your landscaping is somewhat uniform and isn't problematic. So many times, people put trees right in the middle of business signs and people want them cut down. So when you're looking at that, you say, "Put the trees at the property line so they're not blocking anything." So you, you look at all these different elements. Is there a way, does someone get a bonus, for example, if they're providing a public space, like I showed you the Olson Company did? If they do that, can they have greater density because they're providing this public amenity? So you look at trying, how do you try to leverage that development to the greatest extent possible? And if you do have developer impact fees, how do you try to recycle those developer impact fees into capital improvements in your downtown? We're not going to get redevelopment back as, through tax increment as we once had it. But there are other financing mechanisms that we can look at. So you want to look at all of those different things, just to really enhance the outdoor experience in downtown Millbrae. And I think you can embed that in the plan and maybe give people bonus for densities if they do X, Y, and Z.
Great, thanks.
Wow. Very exciting area, and all the great work that you've done there. My questions are along the lines of Mr. Holliver's, as far as this general plan and leveraging or enhancing development as it occurs within the downtown area. For so many years, we've seen property owners seem disengaged. So I do wish you well on your engagement with them. We would, I think, be very interested, as was mentioned, in mixed use and enhancing various buildings that you've shown here, because they've been sitting for a long, long time. And it's disturbing not only to the residents, but also the other business owners. So that's not helpful. So I think we do have somebody else working on the general plan. So we need to ensure the lines of communication between you and that organization are right up front, because we want to assist in making this a reality. And any way we can do that would be exceptionally helpful. We don't want two sides working against each other here.
Right, right.
So I know Tom will make that happen. My secondary question is, you mentioned walkability. Accessibility to TOD? It can be dangerous. And we do want people to try to come into the city from the transit center. The, everybody else has heard me say this, but the largest intermodal center west of the Mississippi is right here in Millbrae. And we would love to see more of an interaction between those developments in the downtown area. I think that would give greater reward to those who are working with you on this. So I don't know if you've done that before, but we would really like to try to make that more of a reality, too. I don't, I'm not sure how it's done here. Maybe, as you said, just the bigger sidewalks. El Camino in Millbrae is also the largest and widest part in San Mateo County in Millbrae. So we have talked about different designs along El Camino, which might blend in to whatever you're doing here.
Right. At a minimum, what I, and Tom and I discussed this, is drawing boundaries around all those new development sites around the Bart station. So it might be a parking lot today, but in five years, it won't be. And they should be contributing to the district just like anybody else, because they're going to have tremendous impact by the people that are living there, as well as those people's dogs when they're walking their dogs to dinner. So I think we have to look at all the potential, maybe even go down into Millbrae Avenue, and looking at what all those sites are. Maybe they're east and west of the Bart station, because there's development sites on both. I have worked with Bart in the past pretty closely, and Bart pays into all the districts I formed. They do it willingly. So Bart's a very big proponent of these districts. And if they're doing a long-term lease with somebody, my guess would be that they would instruct the developer that they need to be part of this district, too.
Well, bless you and good luck on that one.
[laughing]
We do not have representation on the Bart board. So your response in other areas might have been helpful there. We have not seen such a response.
Yeah, I've been working with staff, and I think, at least at the staff level, the ones I've been working with get it. They understand that they really want to build the capacity around all the stations. So I think that that's better to have them be supportive of it than opposed to it. And that was the point I was trying to make.
Okay. Wow. This is very exciting and hopeful, I think.
Yeah. So Mayor, if I may, just a few comments about some of the interaction between our general plan and specific plan consultants and New City America. There's great opportunity here. I mean, without question. We will be bringing some pretty radical, I guess, land use changes with the, with the specific plan, such that we are looking at 40 to 80 units an acre, and, and using that as an overlay where medium-high-density residential will be allowed anywhere in, in the central business district. But with that, mandating ground floor commercial or ground floor retail within the district. So we are working on that. We're working closely with Marco. We're the curators, us and the property owners and business owners, curators of what Millbrae is going to be. And there is tremendous opportunity here. You saw the increase in residential in Little Italy. The buy-in power, the local residential community makes the downtowns even that much stronger. And I think that that needs to be consistent with our specific plan and general plan. And we will be bringing that to you for detailed conversations and direction here in the next month, month and a half.
Well, and let's keep in mind, too, hospitality.
Yes.
To insist on, you know, retail at that level does not benefit our city. The highest revenue we get is from the TOD. So when we're looking at a balance here, I think we have to equalize how these developments are happening. So you just can't say everything's going to have the same effect here. And given our location in relationship to the airport, it's very significant.
You see me smile because that's the same conversation Marco had with me about 4:30 this afternoon. So we, we are on the same page with, with that land use.
Ms. Schneider, you had another question?
I wanted to say, thank you for pointing out some of the buildings that we do have that really truly are lovely. The building that Pete's Coffee is in and across the street that Millbrae Jewelers is in. Sadly, Millbrae Jewelers is, they're retiring. We've got these great buildings. We have no historic preservation ordinance. So the back history on that 16-mile house that you pointed out is, we actually had an original milehouse from the days when people would ride the carriage from San Francisco. And I was a teenager, maybe younger, when it was the beginning of the Millbrae Historical Society trying to save it. Ultimately, they didn't. Now, the other cities that have managed to hang on to their milehouses can have events. Brisbane just had a big event this year on their, whatever anniversary that was. So are, is part of this package going to be looking at historic preservation? Or do we need to be looking at historic preservation? I don't want to lose those buildings, but they're only four stories tall. So how, how do you balance that?
So I would tell you, I'm not an architect, and I'm not a planner, and I'm not an attorney. So I think that that's based upon the time and place and the politics of every city. I think that there are some buildings that are clearly assets and are timeless. And there are other buildings that are first-generation.
Lumberyard, yeah.
They shouldn't necessarily, they're not long for this world. So I think that every opportunity should be taken to try to preserve the fabric. But I'm not going to say this building is historic and this one's not. That's not part of what I do. But I think that if you get a knowledgeable district management corporation, and if it's the building that you had alluded to, the jeweler will get another tenant because it's such a great corner and such a great building. So those buildings, I think, are going to have longevity just because of their beauty. There's other ones that won't, and I think that they will be redeveloped because they have no value as a one-story building. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. It just, but you gave me something else, too, I'll bring up during council comments at the end of the next council meeting. Thank you.
Okay. It's time for the regular meeting. We do thank you very much, and this study session was exceptionally informational. We really appreciate it. I think it was an education to all of us. And we really look forward to what you can do here. Fingers crossed. Good luck. Good luck to you. And I'm sure Tom will keep us informed as to how we can help and make this a real reality. And one thing, too, we do want to emphasize is, the primary business owners here in the business district that are so active and helpful, and you've seen the improvements that they made, we do want to be very respectful because we encourage all those great things that they've done. So we appreciate.
[inaudible]
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Okay. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Like nothing.
Okay.
You were right. Millbrae was the best place I've visited.
There you go. You didn't see our pancake house. You got to try the pancake house down at the other end. Thank you. Take care. Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting. Roll call, please.
All council members are present.
Great. Okay, we have a lot of visitors today. So let's, if you would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have some ceremonial presentations, and we have our chief. Chief, nice to have you here. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for having me tonight for the CCFD annual update. I'm going to look for the PowerPoint.
PowerPoint assistance. There we go.
Help, sorry. I don't want to mess with the system.
He can put out one heck of a fire, though.
There you go.
Know your strengths. Okay, so, here for the annual update. Been busy. It's been a busy year for CCFD, and lots going on. So I hope to update you on everything that we have. And if I have any questions along the way, please stop me and ask. So we'll go over the, just a review of the budget and where we are with that for our current fiscal year. We'll review our operations division, where we have a lot of changes that are happening this year. Prevention, which, as you know, there's a lot going on with a lot of the construction and development, and also some of the new things that we're doing in Millbrae. And also, we'll go over our administration and some changes that we are having there. All right, so for the budget, overall, this was the overall budget for CCFD for all of our cities. We had a slight increase. And just like all the other local governments, we are showing a heavy lift in the Pers area. And I know that we're all wrestling with that. So the majority of these changes reflected those Pers increases that we are all expecting. Specific to Millbrae, the increase was right around $400,000, which represents about 6% in the increase. About 4% of that were directly from those Pers increases, and those Pers increases are shared across all of CCFD's cities. One thing that really helps us, however, specifically in Millbrae, is the fire assessment. We get a pretty, the city gets a pretty good chunk in the general fund, which helps offset some of the fire costs specifically. So we want to just say thanks to the council for that support and to our residents who support that assessment when we go for the update. And that update is, I think it's about six years out when that, when that starts to come to the conclusion, which we'll have to start rethinking about that again. So that's a big help from, from our residents in that area as well. In our operations division, like I said, this is where we've probably had just a busy year. We had a really big fire out in Redding. We had the car fire. We sent two engines out there. We sent a replacement crew. We had a total of about 12 personnel in total that responded out there. And, you know, as we all saw on the news, it was a pretty tragic fire. There was a couple deaths that resulted out there. We have several members that live out there. They were not impacted by that. Some of them were evacuated, but their homes were not damaged. So we had a little bit of a local connection for there as well. And we had, had some folks come back with some poison oak, but that was the worst of it for us. But, which is never fun when you're out fighting fires in 105 degrees. But along with that, we are, we're seeing an increase in our FEMA USR team deployments, of which CCFD is a part. So the county has Task Force Three for the FEMA Task Force, Urban Search and Rescue. And so that is a composite team of the fire departments in, on this side of the bay, a little bit of San Mateo County and Santa Clara County, where we put together a team that does deployments into large disasters across the nation. We've been to 9/11. We've been to Hurricane Aniki and Katrina and Oklahoma City, nonstop. And so what FEMA is doing now is they're pre-deploying teams to these events to get ahead of, so for the hurricanes specifically, we had two deployments this year already. Both of them were to Hawaii in, in advance of the hurricane getting there. So we had assets in place to deal with the disaster when it arrived. Luckily, they did not see large-scale damage. They had some pretty significant flooding on the Big Island. And so we are, as a part of that, we get deployed to that. We do get reimbursed completely by FEMA for that. So we're not out money. We don't lose staffing. We restaff for that, and that gets covered as well. So that's, that's important to note, that that is a fully reimbursed effort for us. So those were some of the highlights of our, some of our operational, other than the day-to-day stuff that we normally do. We're going through a big hiring phase right now, and I'll go through some of those hirings in the next slide. But that top picture with the fire engine, as you can see, that was from the car fire. And then, one of the things that, that we do work well with our law enforcement partners. And that bottom slide, that's a training that we did at Mills High School for an active shooter response. So we had a lot of our local law enforcement, specifically our, our sheriff, who was part of that training with us. It's an unfortunate circumstance that we have to do this training, but we are prepared. We do that quite frequently to make sure that we can operate with our law enforcement partners, as well as our fire department neighbors as well. So in the hiring realm, the, the five smiling faces you see up there are newest hires, just started the academy just a handful of weeks ago. One of them is actually a Millbrae resident who was hired with us, so we're excited about that. And just to give you, just sort of a, an overarching view of this, we've had 25 firefighters hired in the last under five years, which represents about a third of our, our operational workforce. So that's big, big, big for us, and that requires a lot of training and dedication by our captains and battalion chiefs to make sure that those folks coming in are properly trained to that standard. We've never seen a wave like this. I don't think that we will hopefully anywhere in the near future, but, but it is a handful, but it's good. It's healthy. Change is healthy, and we're working through some of those issues right now. We've had eight captains' promotions as well, and those are our mid-level leaders who are in charge of the fire engines that roll out of the firehouses every day and every night. And that's a critical position for us. And so we're making sure those folks are well-trained and equipped to do that job. We've had seven chief officer promotions, which is, is pretty staggering for us. And we have a new, newly-promoted deputy fire chief, Bruce Barron, who is actually, if I can have him stand up. He's in the back. He is just getting his, his wheels underneath him as a deputy fire chief, literally just started last week. He'll be transitioning with deputy fire chief Flinders as he retires in the coming weeks. And so that's a, a lot of exciting change for us, but it also is a lot of work. So, but it's going well so far, I'm happy to report. To give you an idea of what operation that we're doing for the city of Millbrae in terms of how, how we respond and how well we are responding, we give you some average response times. So Fire Station 37, which is right next door here, and 38, which is up just off the skyline, we are well under our requirement for our average response times. Response times are 7:59 on our response time. So you can see we are well under the mark on the average for that. One of the, you know, one of the benefits of Fire Station 37 is it is busy. We use that as the first station for all of our new recruits. When they come off the academy, that's the first station that they go to, because you get exposure to a lot of different elements, whether it's the freeway, whether it's the rail corridor, whether it's all the dynamics that we have in the downtown area for, for Millbrae. So it's really good for them to get exposed to that. And it's also good, I think, for our, for our city as well. These are fresh, really highly motivated folks coming in. So that works well for them. And then you have an idea of the call volume that, that you run. And it's a pretty large swing, as you see that. But if, if, to understand that the difference there is the geographic difference. So going uphill to skyline is going to take you a lot longer. And so that station is, is up there for a reason, because it's a kind of a hard-to-get area. And so the call volume may not be the same, but the- may not be the same, but the situations are not less critical as well, so. And we talked, this is probably going back a couple of years, and we talked, as all the development is moving in, we wanna make sure that we're monitoring what the impact is. Do we need to consider more personnel, more stations, more ability to respond to the incidents? And so, we're kinda keeping track of that, and I know we're not at the peak of the development occurring with people actually in buildings, so we wanna kinda keep track of that. So, you can kinda look at the different stations, and then overall, as it trends along with CCFD, in that our call volume is not increasing or decreasing dramatically. It's holding about steady. It kinda just goes in a little bit of waves, but that's usually what it does. So, as Millbrae, and also with the other cities that we serve, as their development hits, and as we see more buildings going up, and we know there's a lot coming, that we were able to respond to those. So, we're monitoring that. It's one of those moving target kind of a situations, but we are keeping that well in our view. So, the next is one area that I wanted to point out to, which we are, and I know, had a meeting with the mayor and council member Lee last week as well, in terms of what we're doing with 200 Rawlins. So, we're seeing a precipitous uptick in calls there. It averages out to just under one call a day, and the weekends, it escalates to about twice a day just because of the volume there. But, as you can see, if you can kind of make out that slide, it's really tough to read out, but those are calls by quarter, the different colors, and then, just to the right, that yellow bar indicates calls that are occurring between midnight and 4 o'clock in the morning. So, that's when the train stops running. So, we're seeing an uptick there, and we have some suspicions about why that's occurring, and I know in discussions with the mayor that we are, we're working on that problem. We're working with our law enforcement problem. It's sort of a, it's a big problem for us to get our hands around, but we just wanted to kinda bring it up so you understand that we're aware of that. We've reached out to our BART partners. We're continuing to have the dialogues to get a context for the impact of that. I've contacted all the other fire departments that have end-of-line stations, so Richmond, Fremont, Alameda County, Contra Costa, to see if they're having the same impact, and they are, for sure. And having worked in Daly City many, many years ago, when that was the end of line as a young firefighter, I experienced the same thing. So, it's not a new phenomenon. It is bringing relatively new experience for us in Millbrae with some other issues, but we're working on it. We understand it, and we're working with our law enforcement partners to figure out what's the best direction for this. Next is just kind of a nice to know. We have some, some of the relatively larger nursing facilities are in Millbrae because of its connection to the hospital, as Burlingame as well, has some large care facilities, and we do run a fair amount of calls there. This just gives you an idea for what that looks like and what the impacts are. We have really good relationships with most of these facilities. A couple of years ago, it was roughly about two and a half years ago, we had a large issue at 1100 Trewza, which is actually in Burlingame, but the point is that they had a small fire there in which they had to empty their entire facility of 200 patients, most of which were non-ambulatory. That was a huge drill for us, and that was a huge wake-up, I think, for the county in how we provide those services, because, you know, what are you gonna do with 200 people who can't care for themselves, can't walk, can't get downstairs, because the elevator was out of order? So, we wanna recognize these things before they occur, and knowing that there are some large facilities in Millbrae, that we are aware of those as well, and we do have good partnerships with them, but I just thought I'd give this to you to give you some understanding of what's out there and what we do. Okay. Moving on to our prevention, our prevention division. We've been really busy in prevention. We have a lot of, a lot of plans that are on the table for developments, and I know that you've all been way more involved in that than we have, but we kinda see the working into that and how that translates into safe buildings. And so, we're working really hard as those come across. We are increased our level of business inspections. It used to be in Millbrae where we just did business inspections on restaurants. Now, we do them for all new businesses as they come in to make sure that those businesses are safe, so they can stay in business, and we maintain a good relationship with them and also increases safety for our citizens. So, that's one big thing as well. We also have, we've kinda seen an increase because, I think, of the fires over the last couple of years, vegetation management complaints, which we respond to. I have one more slide to give you an idea of where those are occurring and some of the recurrence of that, but we've been very active in that as people have heightened awareness of the dangers. I have a couple, more information and some more slides coming, so I'll get to that one as well. As you know, our training division is right next door as well. That is the hub for the training for all the fire departments from San Bruno down to Belmont. We have a regional cooperative training division, and we provide that training, and this is one of the major hubs, and we have a state-of-the-art classroom, which we do all of our training there, and so, you'll often see lots of fire engines from different cities, and I think last year I mentioned the fact that we had a, there was a fire on Millbrae Avenue just a couple blocks away. It was in the middle of the afternoon. We had all the engines at training. We had five fire engines there. Within probably about two minutes, the fire went out very quickly, so some of the benefits that we have of having a training division there. And we also have a daytime presence there in the office, so we have administrative staff that's there, so if we do get the occasional knock on the front door, there are administrative staff there to handle that situation as well. So, it gives us a lot of organizational flexibility in what we can do and what we can deliver to the citizens and also to our members as well. As you remember, Mr. Frank Barbera, we kinda honored him and his, we honored his daughters, and we were thankful that he was still walking around, so that we did that. That was a, I was just looking at that picture, and as I was building the PowerPoint, I was like, that's, it's just one of those things that just gives you a lot of satisfaction in this career, to see people, you know, come through like that, and just the significance of his daughters, that's huge, so I just thought I'd put that picture up. We hired a full-time fire prevention specialist, an additional one, actually Derek Fick, I think he's in the back, if he could stand up. As the demands on our prevention staff increased, we were having to meet that demand with staff, and so, we're happy to bring Derek aboard to provide those needs for us. We have the Junior Fire Marshal Picnic every year. That was a very big success. We're gonna, I think our next presentation is also honoring that as well, so we will, I'll save the secret for that. And then, we continue to support CERT training in our CERT teams. Again, Millbrae has a very robust and active CERT team, and Dino does a great job of that, and we do all that we can to support him around CERT. So, something that's coming for us, so as I was saying, that the wildfires are, of course, on everybody's radar. We had some significant devastating fires. Everything is pointing to we're having some climate change. We're having some change in conditions, where we're not getting rain, or we're shifting in how the rain's occurring, and the timing, and the snow melt, and I won't bore you on the science of that, but what it's caused us to do is really look at our local areas to find out what the actual threat is. So, we know that in the city of Millbrae, according to the maps that were done with Cal Fire a couple of years ago, there's no very high fire severity zones in Millbrae. There is a high fire severity zone, which is in the extreme northwest part of Millbrae, which is close to the park over there, but outside of that, that's the significance of the threat. And those are in relationship to the Cal Fire maps, and they were not, and that's as it relates to state responsibility area. So, all the watershed, that's all state responsible area. So, they were looking at the hazard assessment from that aspect, not from the global city view. So, what we just, were approved by our fire board last month, excuse me, is to do a fire assessment of all of our jurisdictions to make sure that we completely understand what that fire threat is. We will be moving forward with that in the coming months as we get that done. It takes a little bit of time and an effort to get that done. When we get that done, we will report back to the fire subcommittee to let you know what our findings are, and if or what we want to do about that. We don't anticipate a significant change. I will just say that. In our basic assumptions that we're making, we don't expect any significant change, but we would be happy to take whatever direction council would like to on that when we get our findings, and so, I've just kinda saved, saved that for when we have some real good credible information for you outside of the state maps, and that's just what this is right here. So, we talked about our vegetation management complaints. So, this map sort of spans all of our communities, but you can see where the pin drops are. Those are where we are receiving complaints, and then, if you're seeing different colored pins, like the red ones, is where we have received numerous different complaint, like repeated complaints on the same location. So, we track these. We know where they are. Our fire prevention specialists go out. We go on a complaint-based system, so when we get a complaint, we go out, we examine it, we monitor it. If we need to, we work with code enforcement to determine what the threat is and who should be handling that, and then, we mitigate that however it is that it comes back to us. So, we've had good, good compliance with that. When people are aware that, oh, this is a threat, they are most of the time willing to deal with it, take care of the vegetation issue, and we don't have any longstanding, we haven't had any really longstanding issues in Millbrae about people handling that, so so far, we've had a good, good compliance with that. And so, that's where we are with vegetation management. In our administration division, this is our current org chart. We have a healthy, robust, 85-strong personnel for CCFD, and we're gonna be kinda marching into 2019 with a hefty load, with the new personnel and new supervisors and new chief officers and everything that's coming. With all the things that we have, we're looking forward to it, though, and we're happy to serve the city of Millbrae. Some of the things that we're looking for is, we see a little bit of a slowdown in 2019 for hiring and retiring, which is good. Gives us a chance to kinda take a breath and collect ourselves, because I think we're gonna see that again in 2020 as we see predicting some more retirements. That's good news and bad news. The bad news is, we're losing some institutional knowledge with some of these senior people, so we're trying to glean that knowledge as they go out the door. The good news is, as we hire new people, they're come under the pepper formula for PERS, which is a fairly significant savings per employee. So, that's good news. A lot of this change is occurring, is reflecting that, and we have a ways to go where we're gonna be shifted all of classic PERS folks, but we are moving in the right direction with that. So, we know that the Cal's PERS discount rate is gonna continue to drop, which is gonna drive our costs up, and that's just true with everybody in California in the PERS system, so it's nothing new to us, but we are prepared for it. We've been in discussions with Deanna on what the impacts to the budget might be, and to have some planning around that as well. And then, because we're seeing a lot of retirements, or people getting closer to retirements, you know, we have workers' comp challenges like a lot of folks too, so we're monitoring that, and being fairly aggressive on making sure that we are handling that appropriately, because that can definitely, as you know, slow us down, but we're handling them as effectively as we can. But, if we were looking to some of the things that are gonna impact the budget, we would see those three things as some of the big things that we're keeping an eye on. So, that said, like I said, we're very pleased and happy to serve the city of Millbrae. It's gone really well for us. We hope you've seen some good stuff out there from CCFD, and we continue to support a lot of the events in the community, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Very comprehensive, Chief Camerius.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I did wanna mention one thing as to the Rawlins Road BART area, and a question for you, because we have met recently. So, the station's been there for 15 years.
Correct.
But, only recently, we've seen this increase.
Yeah, and I think end-of-line situations have probably always been there, but I think, our theory anyway, is that it's just a problem where people are on BART, and they're getting kicked off at the end of the line. When BART shuts down, everybody on the train gets kicked off. You know, where that's generating from is speculation, you know, but, you know, we're getting a direct pipeline from San Francisco and some of the challenges that they're having, so that, that's one source of that as well. I don't think we're gonna impact that bottom line, but a lot of it is around what can we do, and working, again, with our partners in the sheriff's office to get a better understanding of it, to get the people that we're dealing with the right resources, and, because I think that's part of the issue.
And we appreciate all your efforts along those lines, and we will note that San Francisco gave away $4 million.
Four and a half million.
Four and a half million drug needles last year, and we're seeing some of them here now, which is not at all helpful. So, thank you for working with your partners on that aspect. Ms. Aliva?
On that same line, when they get dropped off, and when they're, the issue, I would imagine is substance abuse 90%, or not, 99% of the time. I'm just curious to see, with working with the sheriffs, that's awesome, that's great, and the sources that we have are invaluable, yet is there a third party that we might be able to engage with in our county, other than just our people, our sheriffs, and maybe not the local hospital that doesn't deal directly with that subject? If we could reach out maybe to some rehabilitation sources that might specialize in that?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think there's a, there's sort of a slice of problems there, but we've worked with Chief Kunkel on that to understand that problem. I know he's reached out to his fellow police chiefs in the area, because there are some resources, and so, I know that there's been some exchange of information there, and I think that speaks to exactly what, what I think the struggle is, getting that person to the right resource, because the challenge that we have is, when you call 911, we can only send them to the hospital. If they go on the ambulance, they have to go to the hospital. We can't, by law, send them anywhere else, and so, it's a very proactive approach that we would need to take to get there, and I think we're, we need to look at some of those strategies, and I think you're exactly right. There are other resources, other people, whether it's county resources or nonprofit resources that could be reached out to, and I know that, I will work with Paul to get that done, because it's, it's important. It's important for the community.
Because it's really not a solution sending them to Peninsula. They don't have the sources, and, you know, then they're, you know, in the psych ward when it's more than just psychological problems.
Yeah. Peninsula's not always super happy to.
Yeah, I don't blame them.
Neither, so.
And I'm gonna say, we had a very productive meeting.
Yes.
With Burlingame as well, their mayor and their chief, as to the community resources you've just mentioned, being more active in our city, and also partnering with SFO because they have similar issues, so the preliminaries are churning in the right direction, and we hope to obtain some solutions pretty quickly with developing these partnerships more so.
Yeah. One of the huge benefits of San Mateo County is the public safety agencies work really well together. It's pretty unique, and I know in a lot of counties, it doesn't happen that way, but we work really well with law. Law agencies work really well together in this county, and so, that's a huge benefit and a value add, I think, to address this problem. I don't have the solution. That would be.
Yeah, life.
Nobel Peace Prize for that or something, but I don't have the solution for that.
Right, and the county has, it's called Life Moves. So, that was the agency that Burlingame recommended we become more active with, and that was a great idea.
And we have, this county has one of the more robust outreach programs, mental health, than in a lot of other counties that I've seen, for sure.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
We talked about it at the fire subcommittee, that there are a number of grants, one from FEMA, one from the state of California, to get cities prepared for various disasters by removing vegetation in creeks, or removing vegetation that could be a fire. How are we doing on that grant application, and are we included?
Absolutely. Any, any grant that we, that CCFD puts in for Millbrae is absolutely included. We did put in for one grant already through the state. We just received notice a few weeks ago that we got, we did not get that grant. There's a lot of grants coming up, specifically around wildland that are coming, and we are very active in pursuing those. The AFG grant, which is the Assistance of Firefighters grant, just came out. Some of them are very nuanced and specific, in that we don't always qualify specifically for that. There's also a connection to, and we can work with the other departments as well, the Parks Department, sometimes there's better access to those grants because it's more relative to that. The challenge that we have, and especially when it pertains to vegetation management, is our access and authority on private property. We don't have a lot of reach into that area, and so, we do go on a complaint base, but that complaint and the enforcement ability is pretty restricted. Without going into the details of that, it's restricted in what we can enforce, but certainly, when we do our assessment and we come back to you with that, and there are some decisions that we would want to increase that level of authority, we are welcome to have those discussions. We are having similar discussions with earlier cities. It's a, it's a big, it's a big project for us to enact something like that, but certainly not out of our reach, and it just, really just boils down to, is the council direction to do that, or we can provide you with the information.
And just for the people watching at home, wildlands, to me, mean the watershed on the other side of 280, or sometimes coming over the freeway, and with fires now jumping great distances, that's what we're talking about?
Well, I think anytime you have what we consider open space, so we have canyons that have open space, anytime you have a large area of open space like that, you have the potential for fire. Now, a lot of the fires that we've seen, whether it's Santa Rosa or Santa Barbara or some of these other fires, they have unique weather and topographical conditions that are in place that we don't have, so south-facing winds, down-facing slopes. We don't have those similar conditions like we had over the weekend, where the wind was kinda coming out of the east, it was sort of a heated wind coming downslope. We have a different facing slope, so, again, nuances to that, but absolutely, anytime you have open space, there is a, there is a potential threat there, and those are the areas that we would focus on in this assessment, and also, if we had to do any further reach into enforcement, that's where we would focus.
So the area that, and I'm just going blank on the street, it's up by Crestview, it's SF Water District land, it's fenced off, but I hear from teenagers that that's where they go to party, so...
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of it either, until they started telling me. So, right by, I know one of our school board members lives on that street, and I'm just going blank with the name of the street.
Riverton.
Riverton. It's, you know, so that whole canyon right there, which is one of our partners, the watershed people, and we're working with them?
Yes, so, I'll give a great example. This was, I believe, last week or the week before, we had a fire, it was just off of 280. It was actually near the Fire Marshal's house. So there's a stretch of land just off of 280, that it's actually SPUC area. A fire started in that area, there was some winds blowing, and the immediate resource response for that was, again, details, but, three CAL FIRE type III engines, four type I, which is a regular fire engine, aircraft, and a bunch of other CAL FIRE resources on request. A fire was put out very, very quickly. We worked very collaboratively, and with automatic aid response with CAL FIRE, and their type III resources as well. We have a lot of resources at our disposal, but, you know, in terms of the prevention area, we want to stop fires, we don't want them, we want to be able to put them out of course, but we want to stop them before they start. And so that's the area where we're focused on. But we do have a partnership with SPUC, but probably, as you could well imagine, we don't, can't really tell them what we want to do, we just kind of politely ask, and just like you do, we kind of usually get whatever response we get. But collaboratively as resources, we do really well with all of, any of our resources that cover the entire county.
My last two, then. When can we get a Get Ready, Get Ready training to Millbrae? I know we had one in Mandarin, can we get one in English?
Yes, and actually, I didn't bring that up, and I forgot, we did have a Get Ready class in Mandarin.
Maybe you can explain what the Get Ready program is.
First ever, very proud of that. I'm going to look at Dr. Rocky, because Rocky would probably know that, I think it's just after the first of the year for the Get Ready class.
You gotta, you gotta come up here, Rocky, sorry. You're on TV.
Lucky.
Smile.
Good evening. I'm hoping we can get one going before, right after the first of the year, before our CERT class, because the Get Ready class is actually our first series of the CERT class, and then they meld right together. So, that is our hope, so I will check with our instructors and see how our CERT folks are already, hopefully they're planning for that. If not, we'll make it happen.
Great, I would love to see that. And finally, I attended the Disaster Preparedness Day down at the fairgrounds, and I want to say thank you to all of the first responders who were there. I've never gone to one. It had ladder trucks, it had the search and rescue truck, you could see children climbing in there, it was the best adventure. But also, I had an opportunity to speak with the CAL FIRE teams there, and, you know, I'm sure all of us feel for the loss of the firefighters that we've had this year, but thank you to all. There was one other really interesting program there, where it's a community that bring their dogs, they're not, well, they're service dogs, but I had thought, oh, they bring them to people who've lost their house in a fire, but they actually bring them to firefighters who have been dealing with, or other first responders, dealing with heartbreaking activities. And I'd love to get that, a little bit more information about how to bring that program. The people down at the county came all the way down from Santa Rosa, I think. I don't think they were locals, at least the volunteers, but what an amazing program. And, again, thoughts and prayers to all the families.
Thank you, thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, and I know Wynne has a question, if Wynne, you could wait, we want to, there's some children here, I think we need to get moving on. So if we could move on to the next one, and we'll get to Wynne's question right after that. We have a presentation to the CC, did you have one?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll get you at the end, too.
I'm going to bring up Deputy Fire Marshal Rita.
Great. This is the CCFD Annual Firefighter Prevention Month School Contest winners. Drumroll, please.
Good evening, thank you. So I'm here to talk about Fire Prevention Month, but first, I wanted to thank the council for your proclamation that you presented to the Fire Department at last month's meeting. We appreciate the recognition that the council has given Fire Prevention Month as October being Fire Prevention Month on a national basis, and we know that you share our concern with maintaining the fire safety of our communities, so I thank you for that. So, we have started off October very active in our schools with our Fire Prevention Month activities. We have already begun doing our presentations to our schoolchildren in our elementary schools. Both fire prevention and firefighters go out to the students, and in an assembly presentation, talk about general fire safety items and so forth. So, it's always a great time for the students to see the firefighters, and as well as have it be a learning experience with how not to be afraid of a firefighter that's dressed in turnout clothes and so forth. So, we gain a lot of appreciation from the students for that. So, one other thing that we do within the recognition of Fire Prevention Month is, we have a home fire safety checklist contest. So it's a long name, but what that means is, we distribute checklists for the students to take home, and they do their own inspection of their home. And we have them look at smoke alarms, and create and practice a home escape plan, look at everything from electrical safety to space heaters, and evaluate their own home. And we found in the past, and this is no, this year's no different, that the families really come together. The children take this home, and they do this project as a family. So, while we are imparting this education to the students, the students are taking it home to their families, and the families are already aware, it's more of a reinforcement, so that they do this as a family, and they practice a family drill, a home escape drill as a family, and it's just a great experience for the family, and we really are excited to have this contest. So, of all of the students that then return their completed checklists to the Fire Department, we have a process of evaluation and elimination, and we have recognitions to student winners in schools. But then, we go a step beyond, and we have a grand prize winner for the entire school district. And we have chosen that grand prize winner, and she is in the audience today. So, I would like to pass this on to Chief Kamier, and I'd like to ask Megan Gallagher, fourth grade from St. Dustin's, to come up here.
All right.
Now, I will say that the grand prize is a private station tour of Station 37, so we're pretty excited to give her that. So, we know that it is a great photo opportunity for her family that's here, so...
Come up, come on up, you don't have to...
Yeah, don't be shy, if you want to come up. And Mayor Pappan, if you'd like to come down, if you wish?
I think the council...
The council, absolutely.
As a whole, so why don't we all come down? This is very impressive.
Where would the photographers like us?
Congratulations.
Right there?
Do you want to bring her, the family, so they don't get lost behind this thing?
Congratulations, young lady. Let's get her. We'll back up a little bit, Dad. Let's get everybody in here, okay? Come on up here, come on. Right in the center of the room. Chief? Chief? Come on in.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
This is how you show us where to come.
Where do you want?
There we go. This is so, 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 this is so,[1176.13]
So again, thank you. I know it's very difficult. You're running a great show and, I mean, a great program with the limited resources that you have. And we're very proud to the fact that we also host the training center for the fire department here. It's a great honor and it's very beneficial for our community to have all those fire trucks here. So it's fantastic. Thank you.
We have one comment from the audience. Win, thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
I'm going to kind of talk in bullet points because there's some things that had happened recently. On Sunday, we had a big fire in Salona County and all the smoke came over where I live across the bay. And it was so bad, you couldn't see the mountains, you couldn't see anything. I thought my city was on fire. And there was no, there was nothing on a 911 thing on everybody's cellphone or whatever to say, stay inside. This smoke was so bad you couldn't breathe. And it wasn't even anywhere near the East Bay. You know, I mean, this was coming down in the air. So I called my sister in Union City and I said, where's the fire? I said, turn on your TV and find out where this is coming from. And I said, have you smelled it yet? And this is something too, is that they were having huge festivals and things on Sunday, and there was a lot of people outside. And to breathe this kind of toxic smoke, this smoke was bad. They should have had some alert on everybody's phone to stay, stay in the house. And they didn't. And I thought, this is really bad. Even if you don't have a fire in your city, and it's bringing all this junk in from somewhere else, that people need to be aware, especially senior citizens. We have so many kids with asthma right now. I mean, it was really bad. People couldn't breathe. I shut my doors and I turned on my air filter. One of the things too, that we're having a big problem with is we have drunks and a lot of illegals in my city, and they drink and they pass out, and they're constantly being called 911. And they take them off to St. Rose, and then they give them an IV for a few hours and send them back out. So the fire department was so angry when I called. This guy was laying on the side of my house. He slept there all night. My dogs were barking. And this costs the county and the city tons of money. And there's got to be something done. And I went and talked to the board of supervisors. And he says, well, we have programs. I said, you think somebody that loaded is going to call you when he's loaded? I don't think so. And he does this daily. And sometimes he gets picked up twice by the fire department. And this is the biggest waste of money and resources, and it takes up their time. And one of the other things too, my dad has an apartment in Mountain View, and one of these illegals was actually sleeping under somebody's car in the carport. And they called the police and they said they couldn't do anything because it's a sanctuary city. So you can't even get somebody that shouldn't be on your property out to sleeps under your car when you're trying to take your kids to school in the morning. And this isn't an apartment building. And this is scary because it's going to happen here too. So there's some other things too, is that because of the chlorine and the drinking water leaching lead in the schools, they said the schools, and I put this on, this has to do with your water. Because when people are sleeping in the schools right now, in Redding, the Redding Fire, they are sleeping in Weaverville High School. And they, all the people in that school are drinking the water from the resources there. And I know that you, you had a Boy Scout that won some kind of award here in Millbrae because he did barrels and put all your food and stuff in. Every school should be tested for lead. Because if this is becoming, your schools are for food, water, and shelter. And this is what I'm complaining in my city, because the lead is leaching, and they were supposed to put these $250 water fountains or something to take some of the poison out, and they didn't do it. But this is what's really important, is that every school should be tested for lead.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate everything. Okay. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lee, you had another question?
Yeah, I just had one other question. I'm just concerned about some of the comments about the homeless people. I know a lot of them do have drug issues, but I'm also, and not to say that we shouldn't be vigilant about certain homeless people who might be on drugs, but I'm also concerned that it might be people who aren't on drugs, or just simply homeless, and, you know, just bad luck. So I'm just, just want to express my, I know it's really difficult to figure out who's who and to provide a safe environment for everybody, but I also, I just have a heart for those people who just, you know, just down their luck. And to be stigmatized as just one of those throwaway people because, you know, they are out of luck. I just want to be careful that we don't stigmatize every homeless person as a drug user. Thank you.
Agreed, that's which is why I didn't, you know, I didn't really comment to that, what we're seeing. I think we're just seeing an uptick. You know, whatever's out there is out there. And if we do have an opportunity to help somebody on their situation, we definitely, we do that. We work with our law enforcement partners, and they have access. Law has access to a lot of different opportunities for that. So, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much to you and the entire staff. We greatly appreciate all your hard work and efforts. We look forward to your assessment report. That'll be very interesting. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. And all the CTF members are happy to work for you. So, thank you.
Okay, agenda overview, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council. So tonight's agenda, here at item number two, we will also update you, staff briefing, especially our sewer main replacement program that's going on, on Hillcrest and Broadway. Then next, item number three is approval of the meeting minutes, both for the regular meeting of September 11th, 2018, as well as the regular meeting of September 25th, 2018. Item number four will then be oral reports from cities committee and commissions, that we have none tonight. Then public communication. And then we move to the consent calendar. Item number five is resolution accepting the emergency concrete repair at Cowan Canal as complete and filing a notice of completion. Item number six on the consent calendar is to adopt a resolution waiving its competitive solicitation requirements for the design and construction support services on the 2019 Larkspur Drive pavement project, and awarding a professional services agreement to Pavement Engineering, Inc. And that concludes the consent calendar. There are no public hearings, no existing business, or no new business this evening. So very short calendar tonight, Mayor and Council. I would like to mention to you, in terms of staff updates, tomorrow ballot boxes will be delivered here at City Hall. San Mateo County Elections Office will drop them off in the morning. The ballot boxes will remain in the lobby through Election Day. And anyone can come to the City Hall during the regular business, our regular business hours, and drop off their ballot in the ballot box. On Election Day, the, on Tuesday, November 6th, the Elections Office will pick up the boxes here at City Hall at 5:00 PM when we close. Millbrae will also have a voting center located at the Millbrae Community Center behind City Hall, and it will be open November 3rd through the 5th, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then on Election Day, the Voting Center will be open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. Also, I'd like to mention that Millbrae goes back to the movies, Hocus Pocus. This is our third Friday of every month. That's Friday, October 19th. The city of Millbrae will host at Central Park. Also, I'd like to report that we recently sent out 44 violation notices for Airbnb short-term residential rentals, collecting three years of back TOT taxes. And I'd like to also compliment the fire chief and his crews. They actually went to a structural fire at 360 Loyola Avenue, and found that that was an Airbnb unit, communicated back to us, so the violation. So we're in good cross-communication. That was on our list. They did already get a TOT notice. So we are pursuing that, as well as an issue up on Crestview, and a few others. So our ordinance is actually giving us quite a bit of teeth to enforce this. So I'm happy to report that. And we'll have, like we mentioned at the end of the first quarter of the implementation of the ordinance, we'll provide information back to the city council. And with that, I'd like to bring up and introduce Key Lim, our Public Works Director, to go through a detailed update of the Broadway sanitary sewer modernization project currently underway.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and member of the city council, Key Lim, Public Works Director. I'd like to give you a quick five-minute updates on the construction. I know we have been causing some complaint, causing some inconvenient traffic delays and generate some complaint.
Oh, yeah.
Therefore, I'd like to bring you up to speed. So this is the last of the Baykeeper package. The major sub-basin 1, 2, and 3 have been completed. This is the last package, which is the Hillcrest sub-basin 3. And in this project, we are replacing approximately 8,200 linear feet of sewer pipeline. And they are ranging in sizes from 8 to 18 inches. And they are located throughout sub-basin 3 in Hillcrest, and they are on Hillcrest, La Cruz, Broadway, Elder, and Poplar. And also included in the project, we have about 265 sewer lateral, and those are the lower lateral that we will be replacing. And the project will be done to a trenchless method, what we call a pipe bursting method, in which we're going to pull a bursting head into the existing clay pipe. And behind the bursting head, we'll pull in a plastic line. They are typically a high-density polyethylene pipeline. And we are able to upside them to a larger diameter also. So as you can see on the picture to, to the right. What did I do? Yeah, this is what I'm looking at. This is what we are actually doing on Magnolia. We are fusing together those 20-foot sections of plastic, but we're heating the two ends, we press them together. So they become a continuous jointless pipe. And that will prevent the, I and I, remember I talked about inflow infiltration throughout the last couple years, and those are our big problem in our system. We bring in a lot of inflow and infiltration. So also included in the project, we will be repairing about 24 manholes, and also replacing six of those in place. So after the project is done, the roadway will be restored. And we are looking at a couple ways of doing that. From a recent discussion with city manager Tom Williams, we are looking at either slurry seal or maybe do a thin overlay along Broadway between, between Taylor and Victoria, that three blocks. And also striping all those parking stalls will be, will be restored once the project is completed. And again, looking at the pictures on the screen. You would see that the bursting head is inside the bursting pit. So we lower the bursting inside the bursting pit, and we pull the bursting head to the pipeline. And so far, we have done quite a few outreach. We have, we have worked with our PIO. We have done Facebook. We have done Twitter outreach. And we have done next to, something that's not on the screen is, we are going to be introducing buttons on our main page on our city website, to provide updates, progress, construction updates. And we also sent out SMC alert, notifying residents and also non-residents about potential traffic delay, and try to avoid the area if possible. So also to continue on the outreach front, we have sent out bilingual construction notices to all the businesses and residents along the project site. And last week, we have two of our engineers actually walking down Broadway, the three blocks, and hand-delivered the notice to each of the businesses. And a couple of our staff here, they also fluent in Chinese, so they are able to communicate with the businesses in any other language than English. And as part of the requirement of the, of the project, we are requiring the contractor to send out a five-days, five-days notice prior to them getting to the project site. And also the day before, they will do a door hanging notice, to alert the businesses and property owners about potential impacts, such as no parking, delay, and stuff like So this is the overall schedule of the project. We started the project sometime in early September, and we had finished a section of pipeline replacement along Hillcrest. And we are now at Broadway, which is a challenging part of the project, the three blocks. And we are going to be replacing about 1,600 linear feet along that three blocks on Broadway. So as part of the, part of the contract requirement, the contractors are given two weeks to shut down each of the block on Broadway. And they are not a total shutdown. They are close to two traffic, and local traffic will be provided. Emergency vehicle will still have access, and also garbage trucks and post office postal truck. So the schedule on Broadway between Taylor and Hillcrest, it just started yesterday. So it will be two weeks, and we expect the project to be completed on October 19. And after that, we're going to be moving on to the next block on Broadway between Hillcrest and La Cruz, and that will begin on October 22nd, and anticipating that to complete around November 2nd.
Mr. Lim.
Yes.
Your notifications to the businesses must be strictly enforced. Particularly, the Millbrae Jewelers has already sent out announcements. There is no acceptable variation. So I don't know who you're working with here, but it's exceptionally important that these schedules, I don't know when you announced your start times, but I hope they're accurate, as are your finishing times.
Right. There is a financial implication on those, not, the contract that not meeting the deadline, there is a liquid data damages. I think they are $1,000, $1,500 panel the day. So they will do their best to do that.
I don't know that that's going to accommodate some of the businesses. That probably should have been much higher, particularly when you're dealing with a business going into retirement. So we need you, as our city representatives, strictly enforcing these notice periods.
It is noted, Mayor. So we are aware of the retirement service and the party at the Millbrae Jewelers, and we should be out of that area by that time, by November 1st.
No, I don't want to hear should. You will be.
We will make it happen.
Thank you.
And lastly, the last block between La Cruz and Victoria, that is expected to begin on November 5th, and ending just right before Thanksgiving on November 21st. So I talked about the, each block, they are allocated 10 working days. That is two weeks to complete the installation, and that includes the connections of the lower lateral to the new main line. And also, we have recently establishing a drop-off pickup zone around somewhere near Pete's Coffee at the corner. Some signage will go up tomorrow. And we have, we have an inspector. Her name is Danielle. So when you see her, say hi. And she is very firm, and a lot of people are yelling at her, I heard. So she represents the city. And on top of that, we have an engineer and a public work inspectors out there, on and off, to try to help that direct traffic. And lastly, I know a lot of discussion had been had about the painting at intersections of Hillcrest and Broadway. And that is actually part of the contract. It is one of the bid items, and that will be restored at the end of the project.
I think that's something the council would like to discuss.
Of course.
Is this the appropriate time?
Definitely, yes. It is a bid item. Depends on the council direction. We can either eliminate the bid item, or we'll continue with that. It is being planned for in the project.
I'd be interested in the council's thoughts on this, because we're going into a BID. I'm not sure funding to restore the painting at this time is even appropriate to include in the current contract. We could save some money and use it more so in the BID process. And I think it would accommodate or blend better. Contrary to social media, it's not a $50,000 painting. But if we can save some money here, it'd probably be a good idea.
And disruption for...
Oh, yeah, disrupt, yeah. Shorten the time for disruption. That would be key.
How much are we talking about? A few hundred dollars? Thousands of dollars?
It's a few thousand dollars, the bid item on the, on the project. With summary is $3,750 to restore the painting. It will be a complete replacement, restoration.
My preference is if you're going to, I mean, if you're going to just leave it, you might as well paint black over it.
He's not leaving it. It's going to be destroyed and...
The whole thing?
It will be somewhat destroyed. It will be very destroyed. So towards the end, when we redo the intersection, it will disappear if we don't bring them back.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with it.
What you're saying is all or nothing?
Yeah, I mean, what you're going to have, if you have just like partial, I mean, you know, what good is that going to do? And this kind of, this kind of looks dilapidated and run down. So you neither paint over it, or you restore it.
I'm sorry, wait. Mr. Oliver?
I'm sorry. So you said that the cost was $3,750 approximately to do the intersection?
That is the bid price. That is the actual cost to restore the painting, not the asphalt.
It's not $50,000?
$3,750.
I think for that amount of money, I think it's worth it, to keep it there. Because the BID, that's probably going to take at least a year to get going. If not, at least a year from now, and before it's enacted. And then probably, it'll be some time before there's ever any improvements to the area. So I think it's worth it for that cost.
And my concern is that I think we should start from scratch. If it's going to be something, we can save $3,700 right now, and put that towards the new BID proposals. I think it would give us an opportunity to really make the investment in a better place.
Well, you're going to get criticized either way, because they're going to say, well, you spent that much money, now you're painting over it.
Well, I think, I think it served, I'm sorry, may I...
I'm sorry, Ms. Oliva.
I think it served its purpose by the process of which we were trying to enhance and get our downtown to notice. And, I mean, I'm kind of proud to say that it was the focal point of the BID.
Presentation.
Presentation tonight. So I think it served its purpose, and I would be willing to go either way. I mean, I can, I can see where council member Oliver says, you know, fix it, because we have a long way to go here still. Yet, for $3,700, it may be, you know, in a direction to go somewhere else, too.
Ms. Schneider?
So the work that's happening, we had a different improvement, put in the brickwork on all of the crosswalks. Is the work going to damage the brickwork, or is it happening underneath it?
I don't believe it will damage the brickwork.
Okay. So it's just the, the big hole in the middle, where they've already dug the hole in the middle of that painting. And then your plan is to slurry or chip seal all of Broadway between Taylor and Victoria when the project is done?
All right. We're either going to do a slurry seal, depends on the budget availability, or we might do a thin overlay, depends on the conditions of the existing pavement. We might be able to do a thin overlay, I think. But we need to study that a little bit further.
In which case, it's going to go entirely black anyway. So the whole street is going to go entirely black, except for the brick crosswalks, which we'll keep.
Correct.
And my understanding from the presentation of the BID was that we have two beautiful buildings on that corner, not that we have a painting in the middle of the street. I didn't support the painting of the street to begin with, so I wouldn't repaint it. I wouldn't spend $3,750.
No, let me clarify one thing. I wasn't saying that the painting was as beautiful as the buildings. What I was saying is that is a focal point, that, that we are concentrating on that, that corner.
I just, the gentleman from the BID talked about the good infrastructure that we currently have, and the bones that we have. And those are those buildings, not the street.
Part of it. Well, part of it. And he also emphasized the improvements that we did do, and the benefit of those. But I think that, first and foremost, I don't like any patchwork. Whatever's done there needs to be not patchwork. I mean, if we're trying to improve the look of downtown, there needs to be some consistency here in your repairs. So, I mean, throughout the city of Millbrae, the patchwork is bad. And it just, it, I think it leads to greater need for improvements. This is our focal point. So as Ms. Schneider pointed out, the bricks are important. But whatever you do on those three blocks needs to be consistent, and it needs to be well done.
Therefore, we brought up the slurry seal or thin overlay, to try to restore it to the best condition we can.
If I may, if it, if we find, in working with Key, that slurry seal is not going to do it, and it's just going to be a big, thick can of black paint, basically, we'll take it to the next step. So that's what we're studying. That's what we spoke about.
Ms. Schneider?
So I understand that the BID at earliest would go into the county assessor in July of 2019. And then you have to collect money before you can do anything. But because, I'm sure we all attended parts of the design charrette, one of the big goals is to look at the sidewalks, and the reality that our sidewalks are too small, and that the street is also pretty narrow, that we're going to be doing something to the street. I, myself, wouldn't spend a lot of money doing street improvement if we're going to expand the sidewalks, and shrink the streets, or change the parking structure. I see you have to stripe it. I understand that, because that's still years away. But to spend a lot of money on this road, when, once the BID process hopefully is successful, and the specific plan has real true goals, like Burlingame Avenue, let's spend the money then. Let's not spend it now.
And I'm not suggesting we spend an obscene amount of money. All I'm saying is that it better look.
I do have...
Nice. What should we say?
People are still, just because we don't have our business together, there's still business down there. So we need to be, make it presentable for them.
Presentable. Good word.
We will, we will look at our project contingency fund. If we need something above and beyond what we can afford to do, we'll bring it back to council for discussion at subsequent council meeting.
Once again, I'd like to emphasize, this is the business district. So I'm hoping you're within budget. And we are hoping that the look will be extremely presentable throughout here. That we're not looking for further delays either, is what I'm suggesting. Vice Mayor Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So does this project also, does it trigger the dig-ones ordinance?
Not only particular project, because this is not an open trenching project. This is a trenchless. So we would have a small pothole, about 10 feet or so by 4 feet every 200 to 300 feet. And that's when we put the insertion pit, and we pull a liner through the existing pipeline.
So the dig-ones, for the audience, the dig-ones ordinance was meant to provide a conduit for future needs, like iveroptic cables, and et cetera, for future updates for the city. So we passed the dig-ones ordinance to provide the conduit.
Okay. I think what the guidance we're looking for at this point in time, the majority of the council think that we should save the $3,750 for future benefit? Or do you want to keep that in the current contract?
Or let staff make...
No, I think if it's going to be destroyed, I'm okay with just leaving it as it is, and not trying to recreate it until we get our BID going.
And I'm for saving the $3,750. Do we have one more suggestion on that front?
Not repairing it?
What, you're not replacing it at this point?
I'm fine with that.
The direction is not to restore the painting at the intersection. You got it.
So long as there's no, you know, like, patchwork.
They're not leaving any. I think we were clear on that.
Okay.
Okay.
And then a couple of the lessons, and I just want to take this opportunity to put some messages out to the audience, and also those who are watching at home. Please pay attention to those detour roadway construction signs. We have experienced a lot of impatient drivers. They actually remove our barricades, they drive into the construction site. And we have young mothers with strollers getting very impatient, and we block up the streets, and partially on the sidewalk, we put up a caution tape. And they went underneath our barricades, and they are jumping over our trench. So I would like to say, please, please, please do not do that. And it will be inconvenient for a little while. And walk around the block. Those safe crossings are at the end of each block. And please do obey the construction sign. Thank you.
Well, if that's the case, can we have our sheriff's deputies?
Is there a particular time it happens?
It happened throughout the day. It's really difficult to predict when is that going to happen. But we have our inspector Danielle out there, and she's telling them not to do that.
I just don't want to...
Is Danielle identifiable by some sort of jacket or something like that, so they don't think she's just out there?
She is our project inspector. She has a orange vest on herself. So you would see her in a white truck, and then she walks around the project site.
I think with all the cellphones too, you might have people behaving badly tapes showing up, which I'm sure nobody wants. Yes?
I'm just concerned with the liability. So can we have, you know, tape when we let people go underneath? It's just, you know, it just seems like a liability issue to me.
Well, there's warning signs up. So people accept the liability if they choose not to abide by those signs. Okay?
Yes, Ms. Schneider?
I was reading an article about the job of, one of the roles of council is to make sure that the public understands where their money is going. And this is a perfect example of where the money we've been collecting for the sewers are going. I know you said you're going to put updates on there, but I hope that the public will take the time to go to the website and realize that this is real infrastructure work. This is the real business of the city. And understand this is why, one of the reasons why the sewer bills are higher.
And this is a 2 million dollar project. We place 8,200 feet.
3 million just for Taylor Boulevard to Victoria?
This is the entire project in sub-basin, about 8,200 linear feet of pipeline.
And I know we live and breathe this, but for the public, if we can get that on the website in a form that's easier to absorb, that would be great. Thank you.
And I want to thank Ms. Schneider for emphasizing that the city of Millbrae, I'm going to get this right now, is reaching 70 years old this year, though we didn't celebrate the birthday. the birthday. The pipes have a life of 50 years. So projects like this are vital. I appreciate the council working together to make this investment in our infrastructure because it is extremely important. So thank you to your staff and thank you to the council.
Thank you, council.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, one more announcement. I'd also like to compliment Key and his crew for, again, that gazebo work that should be up and running the week of October 22nd. So thank you, Key, and public work. So maybe we'll have a little belated birthday celebration.
We should have ribbon cutting on that one, definitely. I don't know if you do ribbon cuttings on sewer weeds, but thank you very much for your hard work on that. Okay, report bills and claims?
Just information item. If there's any questions, the council would be happy to.
Questions? Okay, moving along. Approval of minutes. We have two minutes, September 11th and September 25th. And we've got motions. I assume that's for both?
Yes.
Okay, motion from Ms. Aliva, second from Ms. Schneider. Your votes, please.
The minutes passed unanimously.
Okay. No oral reports. We move on to public communications. At this point in time, a public communication is for something not on the agenda. And we have one slip at this moment. When?
At the Hyatt Regency this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, they're going to have the Live Aware Conference. And this is all about vaccines. There's going to be all kinds of doctors, there's going to be selling books, and they will tell you exactly what's in those vaccines and why you shouldn't get them. And this is really important because a voice for choice, Christina Hildebrand is one that's putting it on, and they had it last year, but this will tell you everything that's in these vaccines. They will tell you about how our government has a big fund set up, that you have to sue the government because you can't sue the corporations that make these toxic vaccines. But they have really bad stuff in it, and that flu shot's got mercury in it. And it's really important to know this because all of these shots have aluminum adjunct and polysorbate 80, it carries this stuff right to the brain. And Trump on Tuesday announced that he is raising radiation levels at the EPA. Now, when they're putting these 5G cell towers in and they're blasting you with these microwave radiations and they put these cell towers right on the schools so they cook the girls' ovaries and sterilize everybody, what happens when these children have to have 72 vaccines by the time they graduate and when they're 18? And then they're being hit with these microwaves and you've got these nanoparticles of aluminum in the brain? This is killing arch kids. And this is why this is extremely important to go to it. It's kind of expensive. It's about $175 for two days, but it's the Hyatt Regency in Burlingame and it's called liveaware.com and a voice for choice. And please check out Earthquakes, EMP, 5Gs, and Attack Plans and More Bad News by Deborah Taveras, because she's talking about all these things that are happening right now. And I don't know if you've seen it, she has a new video out. It's called Sea Level Rises and Wave Accelerator. That's a good one because Millbrae's right on the shore over here, too. And if the sea level rises three feet, that's going to be your next big expense trying to block that because they want all the cities to have some kind of sea level action plan. And this is the most important, is the dangers of 5Gs and the wireless network and what you can do. This is really important because it's from the California Tumor Registry. And like I said, these vaccinations have a lot to do with it. We're injecting people with aluminum and having these things, you know, being used is terrible. But this is one thing, too. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I have this old article and it's from 2005, Study Links Breast Cancer to the Environment. It says, "The illness is caused by chemicals and radiation." Now, just remember, Trump raised the radiation levels at the EPA this week. And it says that the radiation is from X-rays, CT scans, fluoroscopy. And when you look at these 5G microwaves, that's not too good either, but we're going to have more brain tumors caused by those. And Mr. Quirk that lives in Hayward, he's now moving to Union City, he is also the one that he wrote the bill to put them in and he's also wrote the bill to put your PG&E, that we have to pay for those North Cal fires that were caused by those cell towers that he wrote the bill for.
Thank you, and? Next public speaker, Yo-Yo.
All right. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your courage in taking that decision regarding the intersection. I think I, as well as many residents of Millbrae, will sleep easier tonight. This week marks the beginning of the end of the 2018 election season, as ballots were mailed today and should arrive in the mailboxes of all registered voters sometime this week. I would like to remind everyone who is eligible to register to vote and participate in this year's election. You can do so online at sos.ca.gov. There are many initiatives, races, and propositions that require your input. Most importantly to me, Proposition 6, which proposes to repeal a very important gas tax. For those who will vote by mail, please remember that you must sign your ballot exactly as you signed your name when registering to vote. If you don't register, if you don't sign your ballot or your signature doesn't match, your ballot may not count. I would like to send my appreciation and best wishes to both Ruben and Annie for running great campaigns, campaigns that have been focused on the issues facing Millbrae today and tomorrow. A lot of hard work has been put into this election from all sides, and the voters will have the final say very soon. Regardless of the outcome, I am very grateful to have participated in this democratic process alongside two very respectable community leaders. Madam Mayor, before I close, I would like to reiterate with urgency my call for Alan Wong to step down from the Planning Commission. Multiple Planning Commission meetings have now been canceled as a result of Mr. Wong's desire to disrupt the design review process for the TOD projects. Mr. Wong's presence on the Planning Commission is nothing more than a distraction at this time, and I ask him to make the responsible choice and step down immediately to prevent legal consequences for the city and further delays for this important project. My call for Alan Wong to step down has nothing to do with race, nor is it an attack on the members of Better Millbrae who have true and legitimate concerns about the TOD project. My objections have all been aimed at the leadership of Better Millbrae. I am very disappointed that the leaders of Better Millbrae, including John Chang, have recently resorted to attacking me personally. Their smear campaign tactics included ridiculous and disproven conspiracy theories, as well as my appearance on Judge Judy, all nothing more than a distraction from the real issues like the $25,000 of dark money that Alan Wong accepted on behalf of Better Millbrae from a shell corporation. I urge all residents to seek the truth in this election and to always seek the truth. At the forum on Thursday, I pointed out that John Chang was from Better Millbrae, and he got rather feisty, pointing out that he was not from Better Millbrae, even though his name appears as one of the plaintiffs suing the city in court after they missed a referendum deadline. My doors are open to anyone who would like to contact me directly regarding any questions, and I call on all residents and voters to remain honest and ethical in their conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Since it's that time of year, I think we need to be very clear here on just a couple matters here. The TOD projects are not before the Planning Commission, nor will they be before the Planning Commission. One, the development agreement has not been finalized, and that has to do not with the city of Millbrae, but with BART and their negotiations over some property. The secondary project, I'm not sure where that is, but specific Planning Commission meetings have not been canceled due to one specific planning commissioner. And we are aware of concerns and we are looking at them. So let's be very specific here. The city nor the Planning Commission is not holding up any TODs. The developers need to work with the city on several outstanding aspects that still need to be resolved, and the developers know that. Secondarily, the lawsuit that has been referenced, I know there's rumors out there that the residents are paying to defend this lawsuit and if legal counsel will be, clarify this, but the residents are not paying for this legal action. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agreements that the city signed with the, actually, both TOD projects have indemnity provisions in them, so that if the city is sued as a result of a challenge to the development, the developer is required to indemnify the city. So that's true.
So we're not?
We're not.
And they pay the cost.
Okay, so we just want to be clear for information out there and the candidates as well, that there are significant issues out there that do involve the city, and we hope to all work together. We appreciate all the candidates' input. It improves the democracy overall to discuss important issues, but we want to be, as Yo-Yo said, the facts are important, so I wanted to clarify that. Okay? And we have one more public speaker. Karina Vosk, I'm sorry, Vosk, thank you for being here. Please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. My name is Karina. I'm a sophomore at Mills High School and I bike to school. You may know that tomorrow, October 10th, is Walk and Roll to School Day throughout the nation. There are about a dozen of us now at Mills who ride to school, which is six more than last year. More middle schoolers would join next year and more high schoolers would bike if it were safe and if the adults who drive around Millbrae drove a little bit more slowly and followed the rules of the road. Recently, I learned that Millbrae still has a law in the books that makes riding a bicycle unlawful without a license. According to Millbrae's Municipal Code, Section 4.5, it is unlawful for any person to operate a bicycle having wheels which are at least 20 inches in diameter or on any street, road, highway, or other public property, including parks, within the city unless it has been licensed. I did not know this. 20-inch bicycles are basically the pedalist bicycles that toddlers use, so all other bicycles are covered by this law. So that makes me, all the Mills and Taylor kids who ride their bikes to school, and anyone else on a bicycle in Millbrae criminals because we do not have a license. That section even requires the chief of police to personally inspect each bicycle before licensing it. I don't want to trouble the police for something that seems not as important compared to everything else they have to deal with. This law has apparently been in effect since before 1966. Most other cities, I understand, have done away with this licensing law as it is neither helpful nor practical. I would like to help review and explore changing this law to allow as much lawful bicycle riding in Millbrae as possible. Also, I would like to implore the Millbrae drivers to please, like, come to full stops, take turns respectfully, and to not come close to hitting students with their cars. Thank you.
Very, wow.
She's hired.
You're hired, Karina. Yes, I suggest that the staff work with Karina. And thank you so much for bringing that to our attention because I think everyone up here has violated the law, riding our bikes. So, wow, very, very impressive. Thank you so much. Here's her contact information. Please.
Here.
Okay, yes.
I know we can't talk about an item on there, but we'll be talking about bike pedestrian. No, I don't want it on the mic. So how do we do that?
I'm sorry, we'll be talking about it.
We have a bike subcommittee?
Yes.
And we can throw this issue onto the bike subcommittee so we don't lose it?
I think, yeah, just bringing it out up in council comments is appropriate, as you have right now. Okay, so we are actually moving on to council comments, I believe. Oh, consent calendar, excuse me. We have two items on the consent calendar, items five and six. Was there any discussion? I do see votes, but that does not preclude discussions. No discussions, okay.
Items five and six on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
Great. Okay, moving right along here. Since you started on the council comments, Ms. Schneider, would you like to continue?
Oh, and she's not here anymore. All right. I attended the Grand Boulevard tour a couple of weeks ago. We toured Bay Meadows, which is a big transportation-oriented development, as well as Redwood City, where we saw examples of shared parking, problems with a bifurcated city with a train track, so something Redwood City is dealing with is just what we're going to be dealing with on there. Great mix. Bay Meadows is just amazing. They have Survey Monkey, which went public that day. It's interesting that the BID gentleman talked about bocce balls, but apparently this is becoming quite the thing. I know we have one at a school, at Glen Oak School, but they've got bocce courts, they've got pop-up beer hubs and a nice mix of housing, including community gardens, edible gardens, and a nice range of, each time you move through a different area, you've got different vegetation. So you get a feel, it's not all the same, and yet it's just fabulous. They even had playground equipment that was art. So just a great thing on that. That brings me to culture arts. Culture arts will be releasing to the schools within the next week or so, the utility box project. So to Mills High School, Cappuccino High School, St. Dunstan's, and to the senior painting group, there are four different utility boxes. The goal is to have the artwork back in January and then make, bring it up to kind of choose a winner on that. And then the students and the seniors who have the winning competitions will go ahead and paint them. The sad news is with the culture arts losing two committee members and then the chair having an illness in the family, they didn't feel they could handle the art show in November. So the art show has been moved to April. It's the first Friday and Saturday in April, and the camera club has already bought in. The other, in the meantime, the Millbrae Camera Club has agreed to go and take professional quality photographs of all of the existing public art that we have in town. So we'll be working on a list of what that public art is and then let pros go out and make photographs, which could become the beginning of an art walk in Millbrae. Community Enhancement was supposed to present their work plan tonight, but congratulations to Chair Carol Kraselnikoff and her daughter, who got married this weekend. So we opted to let them take two weeks, and they're going to be back in two weeks with their work plan. They have added seven distinct items, including trees. One of the, at the meeting last week, Park and Rec, Parks came, and Parks spoke about tree maintenance, what's going to happen along El Camino Real, the fact that we now have tree crews onboard and we can start doing a better job with tree maintenance. But we don't have a heritage tree ordinance. And for the public, a heritage tree ordinance are rules that dictate what can happen to a tree once a particular species hits a particular size. So they're going to go forward and start working on a heritage tree ordinance, as well as the city tree ordinance. And the request that they have made of the city, that the city consider taking back street trees and don't require the maintenance of street trees to be on the homeowners because they're simply not being maintained. Disaster preparedness, I spoke about earlier. It was really fantastic. For all of you with small children, put it on your calendar for next year because you get to climb into all of these vehicles. You get to see the hazmat suits. You don't get to climb the ladder, which would really be fun, but you, it's really a great opportunity to see all of the first responder equipment, right down to the boats that we have out on the bay. I'm going to bring up SMC Alert. I've been talking with David Canepa, who's the supervisor, who's the chair of SMC Alert, because we're still at about less than 8% of our residents, and it dawned on me that our residents may think that the information from SMC Alert is shared with ICE or other immigration agencies. So we're trying to get clarification to my, and the chief isn't here anymore. SMC Alert is how people would have been alerted to the traffic closure on El Camino last week, they would have been alerted to the traffic closures on Broadway, but when you've only got 8% of your population, it's harder to get the word out to them. So I would, please, if you're still watching this late at night, go to smc.org, sign up with your email address, sign up your kids, sign up your parents. That is the best way to find out what's going on in town in an emergency, in the event of an emergency. And finally, SFO noise roundtable. They have made a request of all of the public members serving on that roundtable, that you are, we are now the designated person to answer citizen concerns about airport noise. Staff has been getting hit with so many questions from the public that they're not getting their job done. So every city's SFO noise person should be prepared to answer questions about noise, help steer people on where they can find the right information. And then the last piece of good news, after a two-year attempt, we now have a subcommittee who will be looking specifically at ground-based and back blast noise with the goal of identifying changes in detection equipment, noise. changes in detection equipment, noise measuring devices, the location of noise measuring devices, new types of taking off that might reduce some of that noise, and basically then going out and finding the funds to do that research on noise. So it affects many, many neighborhoods in Millbrae, but noise is a weird thing. It bounces around. You could be right next to a noise source and not hear it, and could be a mile away and hear it to a great deal. So this is exciting, and I want to thank Councilman Ricardo Ortiz from Burlingame and myself. We've been working on this for a couple of years, but thank you to the support of all the other city councils on this. This is actually really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Soliva?
Okay, something just as exciting. I was sat on the Hartford Committee, and today we actually passed to fully fund a loan that will be specifically for affordable housing. It'll be in Redwood City. That's a big deal, and it came from our county funds. So that as well was a lot of work and a lot of puzzle pieces to put together and to get that through. And on our super happy note, the Japanese Cultural Center, which was Sunday, but it was full of events from Friday, and I was very proud of our city. Thank you, city staff and everybody that participated with gifts and ceremonies and the magnolia with the dinner. I know that there was a lot of you that attended the dinner.
And the Weston.
Yeah, and the West, that was where I was going to go. The Weston was unbelievable, gave incredible rates, and treated our dignitaries with the utmost class and respect that was possible. I was fortunate to also share a dinner with them at my own home and tried to facilitate them leaving and going home to sign the papers. And I think it was successful. At least they said that they were going to go and bring it to their board of 15 council members.
Whoa.
Yes. So hopefully, we'll be able to celebrate that act soon.
And to be clear, Sister City.
Did I not say that? Sorry.
You didn't say that. Those are the kind of papers. You weren't selling them at home.
I did that, too. No, just kidding.
Okay. Mr. Holliver?
Okay. I attended, actually, I missed this at the last meeting, but I attended the Library JPA Governing Board meeting last month. And one thing that they are going to do as a pilot program is actually eliminate library fees on overdue items, which a number of different libraries have tried. I think Salt Lake City was one of the bigger ones that tried this. And they actually had quite an increase in circulation of materials without having the overdue fees. That being said, you can't keep your books and materials forever if it's not returned after a certain amount of time. I think it's three renewals. You will get a bill for the full replacement cost of the item plus a fee, but for overdue fees, those will be phased out, I think, at the end of this year.
Amnesty program?
I'm sorry?
An amnesty program?
Yeah, I mean, there's other things that they've done, like the food for fines to help, you know, clear your fines during the holiday season. But this would be a new program that, you know, unless there's like a hold on the item, you would be able to hold on to it until, I think it's like three automatic renewals with your checkout before, and then after that point, you'll get a replacement fee from, fine from the library. I also attended the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group, and there's a lot that they're doing right now with the business plan update for 2040. Right now, the Caltrain ridership is roughly 62,000 riders per day, which is, seems like a lot, but they are actually running simulations. And this is, there's a lot of, there are some limitations that they have now, but without these limitations in place, they can run possibly up to 243,000 passengers a day. So that would be pretty much a fourfold increase from what we have now. Of course, there are some restrictions to that. They would probably need a fully grade-separated system, which is not cheap to do. There's, I think, roughly 40 at-grade crossings across the Caltrain system, and each one is roughly $150 to $200 million to get fully grade-separated. So that would, it would take a lot to get to that. They also had a high-speed rail update, and they will actually be having a public meeting here in Millbrae on October 22nd at the Millbrae Library from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And that will be for the San Mateo County Working Group, you know, for the San Mateo County section of the corridor. But it is a public meeting, open to the public to attend. Thanks.
Ms. Merrily?
Okay, I just want to congratulate Councilwoman Snyder. That cabinet project is very exciting. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you for doing that. It's going to be really great. And the Dependence Asian Voter Education Program is hosting a free dinner Get Out the Vote campaign on October 17th. Everybody's invited, candidates especially. It's, the idea is to try to get more people to come out and vote. And Chief Konkol will be speaking about safety issues, and he'll be the guest speaker. So it's free, and it starts at 7:00, and it's going to be at Tai Woo Restaurant. Okay. And again, thank, congratulations to the Japanese Festival Committee, especially Kathleen Kumora, who's on the Sister City Committee. She put on a really, she really did a great job hosting Mirko Wada from Hanyu, Japan. And we do hope that we can enter a friendship, not a friendship, Sister City relationship. That'd be outstanding. And we are, we would be the 100th city in California to have created a Sister City relationship with the city in Japan, as far as I understand. So also, we, and thank Councilwoman Anna Oliva for hosting dinner. That was very nice of you to do that in your private home. And so social media, other than SMC Alerts, we also try to put out information on social media, Twitter and Facebook. And, but the other thing about Facebook is that you can actually message the city if you have questions. So if you have a prop, if you have issues or you need clarification, you can message Facebook. So sign up for SMC, definitely do that, that's great. But also, sign up for the other social media. We try to do that as a cost-effective way to be transparent and get communications out. And also, I received an email from the new communication director for commercial development from the airport, Franchis Say, or saying he would like to do a presentation for us. And I think our desire to partner with a $10 billion business with 50 million visitors is to our advantage, so I hope that they can come and speak. Thank you.
Okay, I apologize. We did have a Millbrae resident pass away, and I didn't bring the clipping, so I will get that to staff. Reminder that registration to vote is open until October 22nd. It's primarily a mail-in-only election, but as was noted, there will be a ballot box here in City Hall, and we are a voting center here at our community or recreation center right back here. Will be open during the election day, open to closing. And two, if you do want just the sticker, you can come by City Hall and get your sticker that you voted, because we do want to encourage people along those lines. Halloween is coming up, so as was noted, please drive safely throughout the community, always looking out for drivers who may not be as attentive as they should be. There will be an informational mailer going out regarding Measure II. And if anybody has questions about that, there should be information on our city website as well. And we, hopefully, Ms. Schneider and I can get together for our bike sharing meeting.
We have a meeting date, don't we?
Well, we're still working on that, but you and I, definitely. Yeah, we're trying to get that going. The city council, I can say, did take a formal position of no on Proposition 6. The reason for that is listed, I believe, I hope so, on our website. The funding that we currently receive would be lost. It does help us repair our local streets and infrastructure, I believe, so the council did take a formal vote on that. There are extremely, as Yo-Yo pointed out, lots of measures, lots of races here participating in the process. Democracy is not a spectator sport, so we do encourage everyone to participate in the process. San Mateo County did have a bump in voter turnout, but the United States, sadly compared to other countries, is pathetic in their participation in the voting process. So if anybody has questions, they can be answered at City Hall or at the county elections office. Please join us in the process. Thank you, everyone. Glad to see you all, and good evening.